Good afternoon, welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. I am Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 4th District. Today, the Committee will have a hearing for LO-25-0006 Baltimore City Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services Operations and Oversight. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Vice Chair Zach Blancher, representing the 11th District, Councilman Glover, representing the 13th District, and Councilman Gray, representing the 8th District. Representing the Mayor's Office, I have Tyler Schinella, and representing... Do we have anybody else? And I see Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District walking in the room. Good to see you, Councilwoman. All right, we'll jump right into it. Bill LO-25-0006 Baltimore City Fire Department and Emergency Medical Services Operations and Oversight for the purpose of inviting representatives from the Fire Department, the Office of Emergency Management, the 911 Call Center, and the Emergency Medical Services, EMS, to discuss their operations, apparatus, equipment, hiring, training, and safety. This bill is introduced January 27, 2025, sponsored by me. This is a regular oversight hearing to regularly check in with the Fire Department. So looking forward to jumping into it and looking forward to having a robust conversation. I'll hand off to you, Chief Wallace.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman Conway, Honorable members of the Committee. My name is James Wallace, Chief of the Baltimore City Fire Department. And as I always am, I'm joined by members of my command staff today. My primary presenters will be Assistant Chief John I for Operations to my left, our Chief Administrative Officer, Dr. Shante Hart directly behind me, Assistant Chief Dante Stewart for Community Risk Reduction off to my right, Assistant Chief James Matts for EMS to my left, and my Executive Assistant Chief, Chief Kensington White to my right as well. Mr. Chair, we'll jump right into it. I'll turn it over to Chief Stewart for the beginning of the presentation.
Good afternoon, everybody. So this... okay, where did it go? All right, so the first slide is going to showcase the apparatus that we've taken delivery of since the last hearing. As you see, we have received two trucks, four engine companies, and we're in the final process of inspecting five medic units. So those four engine... Thank you. So the four engine companies, two of them are going to service today. One's going to Lauraville, the other one is going to Marlin Park, and the other two is going to service tomorrow, and that's going to be the orange and white one you see on the picture, that's going downtown. And Curtis Bay will get their new pump tomorrow. The two ladder trucks, they're beginning their training next week, and they should be going into service by the end of the week. So on this slide, we're going to showcase the challenges that we've had in ordering and maintaining our equipment since the pandemic. As you can see, the graph shows that there has been significant increases in pricing for the vehicles due to the pandemic, and that could be part shortage, mechanic, mechanics, production workers, just overall impact from the pandemic. Also, the ordering has been hampered with a lot of departments ordering at the same time, once they realized that the pandemic was not going to be as long lasting as expected. So that comes larger departments, New York City, Los Angeles City and County, they're ordering 100, you know, 200 pieces at a time, and of course, they're going to take priority over a department like us that's ordering six pieces. So on the tariff side, the parts that are manufactured, Mexico, Canada, and here in USA, they're still covered under the NAFTA agreement, so there's no real impact yet. However, the steel and the other raw materials used to produce these vehicles, that's where you're going to see the huge price increase in far as when we order them. And also, that timeline is extended to almost five years for production. So it's a case of who gets ordered first, gets served. Next slide. So this slide, we're going to talk about our ARPA projects and shows the stations that are currently under renovation and where they're at in their project. So as you can see, 45 Engine is almost completed. Engine 30, we're working on front bathrooms as well as rear. Squad 54, we're going to have to do some renovations at that station. Engine 21, we just started this past Friday, running plumbing to increase the bathrooms on the second floor of that station. Engine 53, they're going to get the same thing once we're finished with Engine 21. And our Engine 8 station, that has been moved up due to the current situation where the station is closed due to some, the concrete being undermined from water main break several years ago. On the equipment side of the ARPA project, we're currently training members in brand-new SCBA. We're going from a 2013 NFPA standard to the 2018, and once the 2024 standard is released, they will be ready to include them to be certified for that standard. Also, we're in the process of changing out our hose. We have some hose that's been around for 20 years. So we're getting caught up in getting that standard up to the 10-year mark, so we could be concurrent with that, as well as we've done some enhancement to our hand tools for self-rescues and our rapid intervention team enhancements. So we're moving along from the Stricker Street. Yes.
Chief, quick question. With some of the more critical tools and infrastructure like hoses and otherwise, do we track that information?
Yes.
Much like we track our apparatus?
Yes.
Do we track that as well?
Yes.
And what is the useful life typically on a hose?
10 years.
Okay.
Next slide, is our capital improvement projects. Again, these are our bigger projects for the structures. And so Engine 30, we had to create one due to the electrical upgrade for the station. Again, as you know, a lot of our facilities are very old, so it's a matter of catching issues as they come about when we do these renovations. Just want to go down to Engine 8 again. We had the major water main break a couple summers ago, and this is probably the result of that water main break. We're constantly working on the inside. As you can see, the front ramp has been repoured. The parking lot is next to be done, and we also had to do concrete work inside the station. And we have some money going to the Board of Estimates this May 21st, so that project will continue rolling along. We're looking at hopefully getting the station open back up in June. Go to the next slide. So our community risk reduction. We are currently in, we're currently in the mode of starting an initiative where we are trying to educate our 65-plus demographic of the city. We've used historical data from fire fatalities for the past 10 years, and we're taking that information and focusing on that age group to educate them more of the dangers of fires and any other conditions that we encounter, such as hoarding, smoking in bed, overloaded electric, and just making them more educated in that. So with that, we've take our regular Saturday visits, Saturday home visits, as most of you've been made aware, you've had the pleasure of coming out with us to do these home visits. And in addition to installing smoke alarms, we're educating them of the availability of some enhanced smoke alarm devices, such as a bed shaker, which actually works in conjunction with a smoke alarm, where it'll alert the occupant to their situation, whereas situation where they might not even hear the smoke alarm or have some vision impaired alarms as well. So we have grant funding for that, as well as using our Saturday initiative to kind of cover as many locations that we've identified through FEMA's Resiliency and Planning Tool, which takes the census information that gives us an idea of the population, where there are a majority of 65 and older adults in the city. And we use that data to pretty much focus our efforts in getting units to focus in one small footprint with multiple units while the other single units are still conducting their home visits on Saturdays. Next slide. And this is a map showing the Lifetone alarms that we've distributed since January. However, we've been doing this since 2022, and with a more of a public announcement aspect, we're working with other city agencies, the Mayor's Office of Aging, Older Adults, and as well as the Commission of Aging Adult Affairs, and Meals on Wheels, and AARP. So working on those partnerships, and if a PO would like to speak on it, he can. But that's it for my slides. Okay, so this dashboard is basically showing all of the safety initiatives that we do, the home visits, the safety sweeps, and it just pretty much shows how many smoke alarms we've installed, the number of inspections, how many codex placards we've put up, and how many addresses we've visited.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I'll just note to Committee members, what we'll do for the hearing is if you've got questions along the way, just pass your message to me, we'll make sure to acknowledge you. I've got a quick one here. With the safety sweeps, are we seeing subsequent reductions in fires or things that the safety sweeps are targeting? Are we seeing the data reflect that?
So the data is pretty much reflecting that, and again, this is another way of us getting more information out to the community to make them aware of certain things. Again, also, we take that information, we enter that into our computer aided dispatch. Say, for instance, they go to a location and they speak to the occupant about hoarding conditions that they have in their location. That company also will then turn around and enter that information for that specific location. That way, if we do have an incident, it's already noted that, hey, this location is known to be a hoarding address, which in turn will give us more of a guideline on how to attack that incident, so that way we're not flowing too much water into a structure to add to the current weight inside to cause a collapse. So it's more of an interactive, and again, it's another toolbox, tool in the toolbox for our members.
Sure. I think I was trying to look through the rest of the presentation. Thank you guys for sending it out in advance to try to, in my mind, take an overlay of fires or fire fatalities, or some sort of way to either determine, based on that layer, whether or not we are prioritizing areas after the fact, which is wise and helpful, or we're proactive in certain areas where we know there's a higher risk, given certain neighborhood dynamics, closeness of holdings, and stuff like that, that might lend themselves towards more damage or more risk for lives.
Yeah, so we're trying to do a more proactive approach, to try to catch it in advance to prevent it from happening.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in real quick. So, and they're doing a great job doing this. What we saw last year was the average age of our fire fatalities to be 53 years old. Now, the outlier in that age average was the fact that we had two children early in the year that perished as a result of a fire. So that kind of brought the average age number down, but if you remove those two outliers, that age group goes up significantly. When we looked at that, we started to look back historically at those ages as well, and we see that looking backwards as a trend. So what they've done is they've adjusted moving forwards, and we're using some census, some 2022 census data to show where we believe the population that we need to focus on more resides. So they're building, they're tailoring programs just for that, including the Life Alert alarms, as well as some enhanced inspections in some areas where we know we've had issues in the past. So I guess rear-facing data, but with a forward-facing initiative is really what we're using right now.
That's great. I'm glad you guys are looking at it that way. Please continue.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Tanya Reddick, the 911 Director for 911, as well as Fire Communications. For Quarter 3, 911 received a total of 227,021 calls that was incoming and outgoing, and 92% of those calls was answered within 15 seconds, and that's compared to the 188,296 calls that was received in FY '24 for Quarter 3, and only 80% of those was answered within 15 seconds. So during this quarter, we hired a total of 14 new 911 specialists. They will be the call takers, and at this time, and over the last two years, we are fully staffed. So that's a good thing moving forward. So as far as also 911 and Fire Communications, we've been doing a lot of outreach and community engagement. Two of the biggest things that we did this year, this quarter, was we partnered with Patterson High School, along with Digital Harbor High School. So we're going to actually be teaching the 911 Emergency Dispatch Curriculum, as a part of their CTE program, is their Public Safety Track. So we're going to go inside there and be teaching 911, teaching them how to take calls, and that's going to start off with the 10th graders all the way up to 12th graders in both schools, like I said, FY for school year '25, '26. And that's with the possibility of doing an internship for the 11th and 12th graders. And we're also hitting a lot of the bilingual students as well, because both of those schools offers a lot of students that speak other languages other than English, so that will help out in the 911 Call Center when other non-English speakers call. 911 will also have people ready, available right there on hand to assist with them. So that's one of the things that we was doing as far as the community engagement outreach. Next slide, recognition. During this year, during Telecommunicators Week, which was the second week in April, 911 was recognized as the Emergency Communications Center of the Year by OnStar. And everybody's familiar with OnStar, that's the alarm device that's in your car. So they recognized us for one of the key incident, and then also just because of the innovation. Another thing that we did in the 911 Center, we hosted the FCC. So they actually came down and visited 911, sat down and listened to calls, and they were very impressed with the innovation that we're bringing forth, the technology that we're providing for the citizens, as well as the visitors in Baltimore City. And we got recognized on the Homeland Security website about, for that visit, and how we were very proactive in taking a stance with the technology in 911. So now, as we talk about the innovation and technology, one of the things that we implemented was the AI technology within 911 that gives you real-time call transcription and translation services. So as some council people have came up there to visit, they've seen, they were able to see some of this technology in play. So what happens is, as you're taking a 911 call, real time is coming up on your screen as the caller's talking to you. You can see word by, word for word is coming up on your screen, so that actually takes the time away from the 911 specialists of using their recorder to play back the call if they're not receiving, or if they didn't hear something in the background. So also, this software is also brought to the radio transmission, so it's going to be brought to the Fire Communications side. So as they're on the radio dispatching, if they miss something, it's going to be right there in front of them, real time, and it also picks up the things that's going on in the background. So like, it's a lot of things that goes on, everybody hear it on the radio as far as fires, big incidents, and they might not catch everything, but with this real-time language transcription is able to help. Another thing is, we're also doing the language translation services. So we're activating the quote-unquote "the bots." So if someone was to call in another language, we can activate the bots, and it will speak that language for us, but it will translate it to English to us as well. So that keeps us, we're looking at the efficiency and effectiveness of not transferring calls to a third-party caller, so we have that call still right there, and we can still move forward with it. And it also starts off with Spanish, and it has the top five languages that was granted by the city for the language access services. So the last thing that we're doing with AI in 911 is, that I'm looking to bring forward, is we're going to use it for non-emergency call triage. Everyone knows when you call 911, sometimes depending on the situation, it can be a overflow of calls that happen. So if we have an accident on 83 in a fight that goes on in Mondom, and how many people are going to actually call 911? So when we activate these bots for the non-emergency call triage, it's going to fish through all non-emergency calls. So it's going to say, are you calling for? And it might say the incident that we know that's going on right now. If so, it gives you a direct line into 911, but if you're calling for anything that we deem as non-emergency right at that time, if your tags were stolen, if your pet was lost, if your property was stolen off your porch, and you don't have any suspect information, it's going to ask you these, and you prompt, and it's going to put you in a queue where now we only deal on, focus on emergency calls at that moment, and letting those calls filter through, and then we can focus on the non-emergency calls that are ahead. Next slide. As far as Fire Communications Bureau, like I said, that's under my direction as well. For this quarter, Quarter 3, they dispatched a total of 85,264 calls, which was a 3.75 increase from last quarter, I mean, from last year. EMS, it was 66,279, which was a 2.9 increase, as suppression was 18,985, which was a 6.81% increase. As far as Fire Communications right now, we have five vacancies, and we are doing interviews at a later date right now. We're going to be discussing that with HR to find out when we'll be hiring, and once we fill those five vacancies, we will be at capacity as well. So the chart right here is a graph of the National Fire Protection Association, NFP, Standard 710, where we have to dispatch, has to be completed no more than 64 seconds, 90% of the calls. So for Quarter 3, we dispatched 85.5% within 64 seconds, and it's the same standard for 106 seconds, we dispatched 95.37% of the calls. And that's all for me right now for my slides. Thank you.
I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Ramos, who's joined the meeting. And Councilwoman Ramos, I'm sure you would have had questions about the bilingual translation ability on the 911 Call Center. She just addressed it. I don't know if you wanted to clarify any points of that. Excellent. I was going to ask a question for you if you...
But thank you, thank you. Go ahead.
Committee members, John I, Assistant Chief of Operations. Today, the Operations Section is going to focus on three main categories: response and incident data, daily activities, training, and inspections, and then finally, the initiatives that are ongoing and new. When we talk about, or we speak about suppression operations, this is the breakdown of what we staff daily. We have 32 engines, 17 trucks, three rescue squads, a heavy rescue, seven specialty units, six battalion chiefs, and one shift commander. I'd like to announce, we have all four of our shift commanders present with us today. Next slide. Looking at the data and response totals for this quarter, we're consistently busy throughout the year, and this breaks down our monthly totals. The orange is the response for suppression responses, and the blue is what the suppression units respond in EMS calls. On average, we responded to under 12,000 calls per month, and you can see by the blue, we continue to support the EMS call volume. When there's a delay in EMS, we have a suppression unit on scene and average within five minutes. Next slide. We broke down suppression responses by the council district. They're highlighted to top three. For fiscal year 2025, District 11 had over 5,000 responses, District 12 over 4,000, and District 9, again, over 4,000. They're consistently usually the top three that we see throughout each of the quarters. Next slide. Fire response time, this is the first engine on the scene to a structure fire. The slide looks a little bit boring, but it actually does say a lot. The bar graph shows the time that the first engine goes en route to the time they're on the scene of a structure fire. The NFPA Standard 1710 dictates that we must be there within four minutes, and our average is, as you can see, three minutes. We're close to one minute behind the standard, and it kind of shows our consistency with our members turning out, responding quickly, in addition to the AVL locators picking up the closest units to the calls. Next slide. Structure fires. So this, I'd like to talk about this, because this is our biggest challenge as an operations chief, from a life-safety perspective for our members, the citizens, and also the incident stabilization. They have to make quick decisions pulling up, whether it's vacant, a codex, it's occupied, does it have people in it, and the vacant. So this is a very challenging incident that we face, and under Chief Wallace's term, we've put a lot of great policy and procedures, and updated a lot of policy and procedures to ensure that we are being safe and efficient operations. And I give a lot of credit to the members, our incident commanders, and leadership in general at the incident command level for the progress of lowering firefighter injuries. And we're further seeing that in future slides of some real-time data of how our policies have changed the culture and our injury patterns. Next slide. This is a breakdown of structure fires by structure status. These numbers are pulled from our fire reporting system. It determines the structure status at the time of fire. And again, most of our concerns, we look at the vacant codexes and the vacants themselves. We've updated our policy and procedures for interior attacks, especially on codexes and vacants. Right now, we remain on exterior operations on the codex rates unless there's a credible report of people trapped, and we've updated our vacant policy with the intention to slow our people down, get a full report, get a look. And as you know, we've talked about this in previous presentations, we're seeing about 30% of the time that we encounter people inside of vacant dwellings while we are responding to a fire. They're either coming out, or we are engaging them, you know, in the process of exiting.
I've got a question to that effect, if we can go back, noting that vacants run it either at or just below half of the structural fires compared to occupied structural fires. For the vacants, you know, buildings don't just set themselves on fire. Is it safe to assume that there is activity in some way, shape, or form in a vacant building, or do buildings suddenly set themselves on fire? I mean...
Yes, sir. Good question. That, we, a majority of the time, they had people in them.
Okay.
Unless, a lot of these vacants in the codexes have power disconnected, and that's typically the source of an accidental, most of the time, I would say there's been activity in there.
Okay.
And we've put some policy in place, again, a little bit further into my slide deck, to try to identify that and try to help wrap around services throughout the agency sharing.
You mean to identify folks in vacant homes?
That are living in vacants. Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
So this is incident by alarm. Many times, you hear first, second, third alarm. If you look down at the bottom, AF is when an actual fire occurred for this quarter. It was 168. The WF is a working fire when the incident commander has requested additional help outside of the initial resources. And if you look down AL 2, 3, and 4, that means the alarms, second alarm, third alarm, fourth alarm. These indicate usually there's some fire extension that can't be controlled by the initial units on the scene. However, it can't be an exact indicator, because we've really pushed down to our incident commanders to call for additional alarms for rehab purposes, and you can see those numbers with the firefighter injuries, getting fresher people, and also having like a tactical reserve in that area that's actually having a fire to be dispatched in the area in case another call would come in. Next slide. This is a breakdown of our daily responses and activities. You can see our units are consistently busy. We average about 450 calls per day, and we further broke it down into EMS calls and suppression call types. And you can see some of our busier units, they can have call counts as high as 28 in a 24-hour shift. So they're continuously busy, not only with the call volume, but as you see below, we have unit activities that they're required to do each day. And the dashboard that you saw earlier with the fire sweeps and the safety sweeps that were conducted under Chief Stewart's presentation, these, that's part of this, and what we do is the units each day are responsible for a specific... And what we do is the units each day are responsible for a specific entry and an activity. And I'm just going to highlight a few of them. And one thing about these activities that we have talked about before, it's directly tied to the city's ISO one classification rating, and we continue to maintain that. And as we know, it, it lowers the homeowners' insurances with that classification. So we continue to look at this data. We contend, continue to review it and make sure that our units are doing what they're supposed to do and doing the entries. They are constantly busy throughout the day, not only with their sponsors, but these. So I'm going to highlight just a couple of them that we do for the newer council members. Uh, on Monday, the hydrant inspections, we have approximately ten thousand water hydrants, um, in the city itself, and we visually inspect them twice a year. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we conduct building inspections. We do about a hundred per week. On Wednesdays is our code X-ray and vacant dwelling surveys. And Saturdays, that's a big day for us. Generally, we make over five hundred attempts on Saturday to inspect, install, and monitor, um, the smoke detectors and fire safety education in neighborhoods. We encounter someone not home sometimes, and we've had a robust door hanger, and our public information officer has been very supportive with getting that, that social media message out there of how to contact us if they're not home and how to get a safety sweep conducted. Next slide. So I'm just going to talk a little about that code X-ray, uh, initiative and inspection that we're doing on Wednesday, but these are actually conducted throughout the entire week. Next slide. This is current data, uh, pulled from our CAD. Uh, here, we're looking at the data for the total active code X-rays that we have in our CAD system, which is fifty-three hundred. During this quarter, uh, we found that forty structures have been raised and a hundred and thirty-seven have been returned to normal use. We, we have found four hundred and fifty-six new code X-rays, but that number continues to decrease as the investment in, in, in these areas. Uh, our, our officers and our captains are definitely seeing, seeing the progress of these rehabs, and I, I really appreciate the support from the council and the mayor. Um, it, it's really, uh, helping us, and you'll see those numbers continue to decrease.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, just as a committee request, can I get the addresses for the list of the forty raised and a hundred and thirty-seven, um, put back into use? Uh, and I had asked for that in the last hearing. I did get the information, um, and I wanted, i- if you'll allow me, Mr. Chair, to, um, let the ca, the committee know some of the findings of, uh, that, uh, data. It was about a hundred and eighty-eight, uh, properties. Um, sixty of them did, were fully rehabbed and had permits. Uh, fifty-two of them, um, did not. Uh, they were rehabbed, but there were, uh, permits not necessarily found. And then there were about twenty-three of them, um, that, uh, there were, I had some questions about the addresses, so I've referred that to the, um, fire department because they were, uh, in, um, they, like, next to a vacant property, but it, that property itself wasn't vacant, so there might be an address location issue. Um, and, uh, so the, the reason why I think this is important is that, uh, we certainly want to continue the great work that's already happening around addressing vacancies, but we also want to make sure that they're done right. And having, uh, homes rehabbed without permits is a major, major, major safety issue, um, for the homeowner, but also for the fire department. Um, so we want to address those. The sources that I used, just so you know, was, um, CodMap, um, the permit office, uh, the, the Nuacella. And then I did not have time to do my own site visits, but, um, Google, um, View, Street View is old. It's about two, two, it's, it's about, you know, twenty twenty-one. So it's even before, the pictures are before the codex even started. And, um, so it's actually pretty telling. Um, so I'm happy to share the information with the committee members. Um, I've shared it with the fire department and the, um, mayor's office as well. Um, I, you know, and I want to just continue to do this tracking because I think it's valuable for us to understand really, you know, where we are in all of this. Now, granted, the codex is not the same as the VBN, so, uh, not always the same as VBN, but it's, it's good information to, I think, have. So I want to just let you know that's the kind of analysis that I've been doing with that data.
That's a great point. I want to clarify, so you said a codex is not always VBN. That does make sense, but I would expect that, excuse me, all codexes should be VBNs. Not all VBNs should be codexes.
Yep, yep. So I found that too, where there were some times where it was a codex property, but it wasn't a VBN.
Interesting. So I wonder if we can automate that process if the fire department deems it a codex, it automatically gets a VBN. That, that would make a lot of sense to me. I mean. Yes. Can, um, so as a request of the committee, can we make sure to update that policy, maybe work with the health, uh, the health department, the, um, Department of Housing, so that, um, our codex list always results in a VBN? I got a question.
And I will say though, that there, because of these address issues, I think we want to, we want to perfect the issue, the addresses first because there were some, like I said, that were perfectly fine, that were codex on the, the address that was given, but they were next to two vacants. So it might be actually that other vacant property. So I've talked with the chief about it, and, oh, we're working on, I want our firefighters to fight fires, so the data part, we'll figure out. But, um, you know, I, I just think this is valuable for all of us to really see how this is all fitting to, together.
Uh, so Councilwoman, can I clarify what I'm understanding here? Are you saying there are instances where there's a codex, not because someone doesn't live there, but because there are two vacant properties next to it?
No, I think it was, um, misclassification. And so they were trying, I think that there's codex on either side, and there's VBN on either side, but that one particular house shouldn't have been listed as codex, is what I'm saying.
Got it.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, there's, and we've talked about it, there's also, we're looking at those twenty-three internally, and I think there are a couple of cases where it was just a data entry issue. Yeah, instead of twenty-two forty-one, it was put in as twenty-two forty-four, or, uh, something like that. But, um, to the councilwoman's point, yes, we, we need the data to be accurate in order to automate, but I, you know, I, I agree with what you just said.
Okay. Great.
So I, I just want to clarify one thing that I said because I pulled up my notes. Um, so sixty-one of the properties have use and occupancy, which is good. That's what we need. They were rehabbed sometime in the last two years. Um, fifty-two of them still had VBNs on them. Of the fifty-two, fifteen, one, five had no permits, um, but they were rehabbed. And then the others are in some stage of, of rehab, um, some with permits and some without. So, I mean, I can share the spreadsheet with the committee so that you see the analysis. Um, obviously, I'm open to any improvements on the analysis as well. We've got several data people here. Um, but I, anyway, I, I thought it was interesting for the committee to know what we're, what we're tracking, and, and hopefully this helps the fire department as well. I literally just talked to Commissioner Kennedy about it too, and she thought it was helpful, and it's going to put the two together to work, work it through.
That's great. I'm glad you did the analysis, and I'm also glad you shared it with housing, um, because I would imagine they'd want to focus on that sixteen and help get those properties up to snuff, get their, their permits.
Yeah, there's definitely some other things in, in here that are super weedy. I don't know that the committee, I, I'll share with the committee that they are going to need to deal with as well, but, um, I think this is, it, it's important to understand how we're doing it. My primary reason for doing it is making sure that we're, the properties are being rehabbed with permits. That is the primary issue. Uh, but all these other things have come up, which is what happens when you start to do data analysis.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Sure. Absolutely.
Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just have a, two quick questions. Um, one, I just want to start by thanking, uh, Ms. Reddick and her team over at nine one one dispatch. Um, thank you for the tour. Um, the atmosphere in there, you can tell that you guys are a team. Um, it's, it's very noticeable when you walk into a place. Um, you can just feel, uh, like, just, not to be hokey, but like the love in air, and it's, it's there. And obviously, from all the accolades that you're getting, you guys are doing a great job. I want to talk about the system on which you use. Um, could you go into how old your system is, even though you guys are winning awards and getting recognition? Could you go into how old your system is and, um, potentially what it would mean if you guys had a more up-to-date system as far as your abilities to better serve the city of Baltimore?
So first and foremost, thank you for the acknowledgement. Um, and also, thank you for actually coming down to visit and sit down and have spent that time into the nine one one center with the nine one one specialists. Um, they appreciate, we always appreciate when people come down, sit with us, have a conversation, because you really understand the job that we do, but then also the city that you serve. Um, as far as the system, we work off various systems. The way the call comes in is called through the Vesta system. The Vesta system was updated last year in twenty twenty-four. Um, and that was through NWN Carousel. That's our provider for the Vesta system. However, another system that we use is the CAD system, which is the computer aided dispatch system. That's how we enter all the information from the call and send it over to in, um, any parts of dispatch. When I say any parts, it's either police dispatch, fire dispatch, it can go to DPW. That's what's in the actual police cars, um, or in the fire vehicles. So that's how you receive all the information pertaining to the call. So when someone, you hear the information being dispatched out, they're reading from the CAD system. The CAD system is well over thirteen, fourteen years old. Um, that is something, um, that's a very vital, um, piece of infrastructure for the nine one one center. Um, we have to update the CAD system between every seven to ten years. And as you can see, we have not. What does that cause? A lot of issues, a lot. Um, we have a lot of interruptions during taking these calls. So nine one one can take the calls, but sometimes it interrupts when, um, it goes over to dispatch. Sometimes dispatch aren't receiving them. Sometimes the CAD system shuts down in the middle of the process of us dispatching our calls. Our screens sometimes go blank, and sometimes we have outages from a couple, like, it can last from sixty seconds all the way up to four hours. And that means we have to physically write down every call that come into nine one one and run it over to any level of dispatch. So you can think about how much time that takes and what that takes away from someone who's calling because they're three months old is non-breathing. Uh, we have to physically, like I say, when we physically write it down, we're writing down everything that they're giving us, and then we have runners, and they're running it over to police, or they're running it over to fire. So with that one system being as old as it is, it stops the process. As you can see, like you said, we got a lot of recognition, um, recognition for the innovation part of it, what we're doing. We're bringing the AI, we're bringing the, um, real-time translation services, as well as just other things, mapping systems that you saw when you came. However, that information cannot be fed into the CAD system with it being so old and so inundated. So with anything, we need a newer CAD system to keep up with the newer technology that nine one one is putting forth. And without that, like I said, we're always going to be at a standstill, and we're actually doing the citizens more of a ser, we're doing them a disservice more of, than more than a service with us keeping that system as old as it is.
Thank you for highlighting that. Um, I wanted all my colleagues to hear this as we have discussions going into budget, um, talking about how we effectively keep the city safe. Um, I, I think it starts at ground zero. I think it starts with calling nine one one, calling the folks that are, um, enabled to, um, better, uh, filter out where the calls go. And if we have a system that is old and does not work, we are not doing right by the people of Baltimore. Um, so, um, I know that I'll be raising that issue, um, as we go over the budget process about public safety. Um, to me, that is, you know, ground zero of public safety. So thank you for that answer. And just one more quick one. Um, this is for, uh, the increase, um, from quarter three. It looks like there was an eighteen percent increase in the, um, in overall structure fires and a sixteen percent increase in, um, vacant building fires. Um, could you tell me what that is contributed to? Um, is it contributing to the colder weather, or are there any other trends that you're seeing on why there was an increase, um, from last year to this year?
Yes, sir. Thanks for the question. We, we did dive down into data, uh, somewhat, and we know that we had a colder winter. And if you look at the structure status in the other undetermined, they're typically outside sheds, um, burn bare, things that are on property that aren't necessarily the structure. So that was kind of, I think our increase was due to the cold weather, um, alternate heating sources in the vacants, um, and, and, and things of that nature. And that's where we're seeing that same data in that other and undetermined category. It's not a vacant, it's not a codex, but it's, you know, outbuilding different, different places where people can refuge in the cold weather and, and, and get warm. So that's, I would say, a significant contributor this quarter as compared to our last quarter, um, with the colder weather.
I want to follow up on, um, Councilman Gray's question, uh, regarding the call center, uh, and some of the challenges you guys have been having on the, um, with the technology. Do we have a sense of what the costs for upgrades would be?
Um, for a CAD system? Um, I also have, uh, the acting deputy chief here for, um, information technology for the fire department, as well as, um, Director Hard is right here as well, and they can chime in at any, any given time. So this discussion for the CAD system has been going on for a very long time. We were supposed to update it in around, like, what, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one? However, that was not done, and actually is housed by another agency, city ag, agency. So that software is not under, oh, my prevy, is under another agency.
Which agency is that?
Um, B-SIT.
B-SIT.
Yes, it's under B-SIT. So last time, I think we have a quote, wasn't it for like ten million or something? It's probably a little bit more than ten million. Um, what was it? Oh, it was close to thirty, and that was for all, what, the years, the maintenance and everything that goes along with it. Um, so, um, it's been out there for many years. We've had con, um, a lot of conversations, open conversations with it, and we just really, um, we just did last year an RFI.
Yes.
Um, and we're kind of at a standstill. However, it's more than just the system, so we can actually start doing the backwork behind it, but it's what ta, it takes long to build the system. So we can actually go out and purchase one today, but it takes at least two years to build it out. So it's still two years without the system, between two to three years without it. So the sooner the better, but we've kind of been at a stall and a standstill with it.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, I'm going to make this request to, uh, Tyler Lore, who just walked out. So how about this?
Okay. My fault. Just to, um, clarify, it was thirteen million.
Thirteen.
Thirteen million.
That's very different than thirty.
Yeah, right. I thought, I thought I might, I heard it wrong, but I knew it was kind of like a close to ten.
Yeah, sure.
So it was thirteen million for the whole process of the build out, and that was several years ago when we got the pricing on the CAD system.
Got it. No, that's really helpful to know. What we'll do, um, and I, I'll make sure that, uh, committee staff helps us, um, make sure the administration gets in an update on where that process is and what next steps need to happen. Um, if this should have happened five years ago, we should have some activity here, especially if we're dropping calls and have to result in pen and pencil, that's, that's really problematic.
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate the support as always.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we will go back to the presentation. Chief, please take it away.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just to go back real quick to the code X-ray inspections, um, that one thirty-seven to return to use, it's a challenge for us. We've talked to Councilwoman Ramos, um, of returning something to use that, that maybe we're not looking at through housing's eyes, but we're looking at through our eyes structurally how, how that structure is when it's returned to use. Whether they get permits, whether they have a final occupancy, we know that it goes from a class three, I'm not going to bore you with a lot of construction, fire construction, uh, the way we analyze construction types, but it goes from a class three to a class five, which is a lot lighter weight material, less burn time, quicker chance for collapse. So we're identifying that. I have two of the subcommittee members that are, are deputy chiefs in the shift commander's office, working on that project so we can identify these return to use structures so our incident commanders know that you're dealing with a little bit different type of construction when you're going in there and looking at our burn time. So I just, it's an, it's, it's a big program, and it involves a lot of different agencies and different things, but that's, we, we are trying to stay on top of that to make sure that we're making the right decisions. Next slide. This is one measure of our success for the code X-ray, uh, inspections, uh, program and the policy and procedure. I'm just going to read you real quick the definition of a mayday for the fire department. It's a universal distress signal that a firefighter is in immediate danger, trapped, disoriented, injured, running out of air, or facing conditions they can't overcome alone. We implemented our codex and vacant policy in February twenty twenty-three, and as you can see, the data, uh, the drastic reductions in these mayday reports. Pre-policy of the codex policy, we had eleven maydays, um, were in vacant structures and two in occupied. And then since the policy's been in place, we've only had two in vacant structures. two in occupied, and we haven't had one since two thousand and twenty three. So it's it's a um impressive slide.
I I will say um, this is huge. This is great. Um, it shows that we're learning and that the policy implementations that we've iterated over time are truly showing success. So I, I mean, you guys deserve a round of applause. I'm not going to do that, but I, you know, yeah, this is, this is big. This is big. Um, we want to make sure you guys um are are absolutely safe going into these burning buildings. And having this sense has been um really, really helpful, especially having having lost a couple of members the last couple of years that we've, we've learned a lot from that. And that's exactly what I think this committee wants to see.
Thank you. This is one of the um policies that we recently implemented. And we we shared this at the last council meeting. It's a three one one notification system for the fire department itself to identify structures that are being illegally occupied when we encounter them during incidents. I'm just going to run through it real quick. We have a Q R code that we have in all the engines currently. This went live in September twenty eighth of twenty twenty four. And we put out a policy of how to report it. We have a real time dashboard, which you'll see next. It's, this is where we share all the data with the other agencies, housing, police, D P W, and get wraparound services for their areas of responsibility. Next slide. This is kind of what our dashboard looks like. And basically, we've had a hundred ninety six addresses identified since we started the program in September of twenty four. On our side, how do we wrap around, come full circle? Community outreach in those communities, how to report it. Also, making sure that we're getting into those dwellings that are are occupied to make sure they have home safety inspections, smoke detectors, and anything else they would need to um in case a fire happens um in some of these vacant structures. I'm just going to, this will be the end of my presentation, just talking about some operational progression that we're looking into. There's four benchmarks that we're looking into when we talk about how to operation- operationally evaluate and work better and make better policy and procedures as preparation, the response, mitigation and evaluation. And I'm happy to announce one of our major projects that I know Councilwoman Ramos was instrumental in um is implementing the neighborhood services program for the districts. So when we have a fire incident where there's displaced residents, we've worked with housing to come up with a policy where they 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 come to the scene of an incident and address any needs for the displaced residents. We also still have Red Cross as a backup, but as we know, they were volunteer organization. And the timeframes of, you know, in the cold months when they could respond out um and the delay possibly with the with the residents being out in the in the weather, we needed a more immediate approach on on how to get their needs addressed. And and we have, we have developed a policy within uh and that was effective April fourth of twenty twenty five.
Before we move forward, I wanted to um ask a question about um supports that we provide for folks after a fire. So after fire, I, what what role do we take in um? Like, wh- what do we do with families at a fire? So of course, their houses burned down or is seriously damaged, therefore they likely won't be able to stay there that night. Um, what happens after?
Yeah, it's it's tough to to try to talk to a family through how to get through that. We we have published a booklet uh recently that gives them all the information from step one all the way to the last step, depending on their situation, rental, homeowner, type of structure. So we have printed a book booklet that has those check offs for them. And then with the wraparound with neighborhood services, they're, our education with Department of Housing has really helped close that loop.
Got it. Um, do we? I would love to see that book if we could ask for that as a follow up. That would be helpful, but um do we have an individual um that interfaces with uh victims of fires uh to support them in any way?
Inside the fire department itself, the incident commander um usually designates someone to be last on the scene.
Okay.
That's the person that we've designated, whether it's incident commander or the last person. But we wait for whatever the support services that they need, be in neighborhood services or Red Cross, to make sure that they're taken care of once we leave. I don't know to my knowledge that we've ever left anyone just standing in the street, you know, without some type of link to a service, whether it be Red Cross, a number, um, and and the other services that we have available to us.
Sure. Yeah, I know. I know. I know we have a a number of partners. I'll get to you because I I I know you've had this experience a number of times. I certainly have as well. Um, we're at the end of a fire, I'll start getting phone calls about support for families. And I I know um we do offer services, but I'm I'm wondering if telling someone to call this number or go to this website um is enough. Um, so I, you know, I'm trying to think about, and you know, Councilwoman Ramos and I have talked about this in the past and have talked about it outside of meetings. But trying to think about how we can um make sure that we effectively um support someone in probably one of the most tragic moments of their lives. Um, so just thinking about that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the um D H C D at my request and and we had several conversations about this. They have created uh this new unit. And um the last two fires that I've had in my district luckily have not been major ones. But uh they have shown up, they're there. Um, they have the full resources of D H C D to get um people into hotels, to help them move forward. This is nascent, so we're sort of learning, you know, everything is is going. Uh, you know, they've been showing up, doing that initial work and then um working to support long term. Uh, again, all the systems are still being worked out. Um, but I'm I'm satisfied with the fact that we started this literally this month. And um I've seen them there. I don't think the booklet is ready yet. It hasn't been published yet, um but uh is coming um and we'll get, we'll all get copies of that as well. Uh, there's still some things to work out, but the fact is that they had uh created this unit. The two people that I met at both fires are amazing, very compassionate, have all the tools. Um, so I um been happy to work on that with with D H C D and the fire department on that.
Got it. Thank you.
There's still, there's still more to work out in terms of the longer term, but the fact is that all of those crisis resources um are available.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to note, I saw um Tyler walk back in the room. I just wanted to key him in, uh Tyler, on a a piece of the conversation you missed as you stepped out briefly. Um, there was a discussion around the uh nine one one call system and the aging uh technology infrastructure um that has been faulty in some instances. Uh, and this was something that was revisited, I think initially in twenty twenty, but um uh the the R F I process is kind of stalled. And so we asked for an update on where that is, what needs to happen. The estimate was that the new system would cost somewhere around thirteen million back then. I'm not sure if that has changed or what it might take to make sure that we can um shore up that system in the future. Uh, and the understanding here is that it would take likely, uh, the estimate was like a year to two years to implement the system once we purchase it. So just wanted to um get an update um from the administration on that purchasing process.
Okay, and then that will come as part of the regular Tony?
Committee follow up. Yep, just wanted to put it on your radar.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep. All right, I won't interrupt you again.
You're fine. Mr. Chair, just to clarify, the the pamphlets that we currently hand out are the FEMA guidelines for what people should do. And we're looking forward to working with housing to get it more tailored to specifically Baltimore. But we can get that to you, what we're currently handing out.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just on that note, maybe at the next hearing, we should bring in the D H C D crisis support folks so that the committee understands a little bit more about what the supports are going to be.
If we can coordinate that, that would be great. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, this is an after action review that we just recently established uh to review. It's a great evaluation tool. Um, recently, uh, we've done uh ten of these in twenty twenty five. It's an internal document and it basically evaluates what occurred at an incident, what's supposed to happen, what went well and why, and what can we improve on and how. This has been a really good uh document and policy for our members to evaluate. Uh, when it happens on one shift, all four shifts can see what occurred, um what we can work on. And this is what drives our training right now at the Fire Academy, at the company level and the battalion level. Next slide. These are a few incidents that we have reviewed recently. Like I said, there's been ten published in twenty twenty five. And we've recently uh been able to put, as you can see with the first one, we highlighted uh the incident commander, we put some audio in there and he did all the proper checkpoints uh and and the procedures that we follow, which involved the successful rescue of an occupant um who's who's fully recovered. And finally, the third one, uh, we've been able to recently reconfigure these incident reviews for an E M S incident, which we had at one ten North Central. So we're looking forward to working to drive training off of these um and making sure that we we're we're constantly reviewing uh what we can improve on and what we did well. And finally, uh, Adashi is a new program. When we talk about the CAD going down and different tools that our incident commanders have available to them. This is a web based system and it's currently in the procurement process, but it's going to have a iPad, all the incident commanders that are running uh the incidents uh from the battalion chief to the to the deputies and assistant chiefs will have an iPad that has this Adashi software. It's a real time software of our CAD. It's pulled from our CAD data in a web based system. And it's also has, we're going to have uh some rail things, uh, some rail subject matter expert things that they can actually look at through for hazmat rail cars, E V information, tell nine one one, and also they can do all their inspections right on this iPad. What our transition is right now, we have it at the command level. We're hoping to get it to the company level. Next slide. This is kind of what the software looks like. Again, being web based, when the CAD system goes down, we still have the ability to see some of this data. And on the left hand side, you'll see any incident that is currently active in the city. You hit the button and it takes you directly to a map and a Google map for an overview of the incident. Next is the, actually the incident information on the left hand side where you see live view. It gives you really clean data uh and clean info. And also, if you look down at the bottom, it gives us where we we can immediately identify hazards, whether it be in codex, vacant, and also the comments from the companies that actually put these these uh entries in. Next, this is a codex location map. This this software also provide us with, if you hit on any given address and you hit the code X ray marker on the address, on the right hand side, you can see that little block, it gives you the comments, what was wrong, where where the problem was. And this is also where we've identified where the re- reinspection took place and we returned it to normal occupancy. Um, and finally, the final one is, this kind of gives you an overview of a small area of where we we identified some codexes and this will help our incident commanders not only know during the incident where they are in relationship to the the block that they're in, but also for inspections for our captains and our our company officers to go do reinspections. It'll give real time data and remove that from the CAD system. And it it's a, it's a really good program. We're working on developing it and I'm I'm hoping to have it up and running by the next presentation. That's all for operations.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Deputy Chief Ronald Hudgens, Fire Marshal. Uh, on this particular slide, um it shows quarter three, the uh four activities that we do on a daily basis uh compared to what we had done in quarter two. Um, fire inspections, we have gone up quite a bit to forty eight twenty two. Uh, plan reviews, we're staying about the same, six oh eight compared to six fourteen last quarter. Uh, the fire safety talks and fire drills, I'm going to um let you all know about why that decreased to fifty three from eighty nine. This uh quarter three is the colder months, January through March thirty first. Uh, the school system and the nursing home facilities, we do not conduct fire drills during that time period. So that's why that number is lower. And our fire investigations are up uh one forty six from one oh two. Again, we had an uptick in fires in the in quarter three.
Um, I, I, I think, I think it'd be helpful, um, chief, if we could have an offline conversation around um plan reviews and the permit process. It's a a issue that I hear about a lot. Uh, and I want to figure out what we can do um to still do that work effectively, but to do it more expeditiously. Um, I'm not sure if it's a staff piece, I'm not sure if it's a communication piece, I'm not sure necessarily what it might be. But this seems to be a pretty significant pain point for folks that are doing uh development work across the city. And I feel like if we can figure out how to improve this process, it might open up an opportunity for us to to do more redevelopment across the city more effectively. So I I would, I would like to have an offline conversation um just to kind of dig into this. I think also um for this issue, I think it would be helpful for us to um begin collecting um the turnaround time for permit requests um from the initial request to the eventual approval. And then for those that hang out there, just having a sense of where they where they tend to get stuck. Um, I think that process has been pretty tricky for folks and I want to figure out how we can improve it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just for your knowledge, we're we're have another hearing about the permit process in June, um, June seventeenth. So this will come up at that time um as well. But I think it's a good idea to have some conversations prior to that hearing. Just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, chief, I, just a comment. I don't know if it's reflected as an official plan review or not, but I just want to give a huge word of thanks um to your office. Both Commander Eames, uh Eames and Assistant Chief Idd were uh very uh responsive and creative and helping um helping us figure out the the improvement plans to the parking changes for Digital Harbor. Yes, sir. And um it meant, I know, a whole lot to both me and and Principal Jackson, the principal over there. And and it's going to pay off, I think, a lot for our school. So I just wanted to say a big thanks for that over the last couple of months.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. You can continue.
Next slide.
Yeah.
And this um graph here just shows that the citywide arsons through uh through that quarter um compared to last years, quarter three, uh, we're down thirty five percent in arsons.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, committee members. Carl Knight, Deputy Chief Office of Safety and Risk Management. This graph shows the fire ground injuries, the reduction of eighty three percent from quarter three of twenty twenty four to quarter three of twenty twenty five. We went from twelve and twenty four to two this year. Next slide. And this one represents the collisions. We actually went up eight point five seven percent from seventy collisions during F Y twenty four to seventy six and F Y twenty five.
Good afternoon, Dr. Shante Hart, Chief Administrative Officer. We're looking at this uh the third quarter of recent hires for the fire department. The majority of our hires were professional staff. We do have a class at the academy. We did hire fifty E M T firefighters. There are currently forty one of them in the class today. The nine one one supervisors were actually promotions that took place during that timeframe, but we wanted to show you what transpired in the nine one one center. Next slide. Um, although the start date for the current E M S class is outside of that quarter, we just wanted to show that we are moving forward with um providing additional E M Ts and paramedics and hiring uh E M Ts and paramedics. Currently out of what was hired, we have sixteen E M Ts. we have 16 EMTs and two paramedics in that class at the academy. Our fiscal technician, it was open recruitment. However, we have had three individuals selected for an interview. Interviews will take place on the 14th of this month. That training and exercise coordinator for OEM, we have 31 applicants. I believe that DHR referred 23 to us and that will remain open until July 4th. A fire codes plan review, we have received five applicants and those applications and those resumes are being, Chief Eames is actually reviewing those right now. We have a projected date, although it's outside of this quarter, we have a projected date for a new EMS class to come about and we're looking at July 9th for that. Next slide.
Quick question. Do we have the count of vacancies in comparison to the hires?
Sorry.
The vacancies?
Yes, for?
EMT firefighters?
Sure. Oh, EMT firefighter, we are right now with the class that's out there that should satisfy the vacancies that we have for EMT firefighter. Yes. For EMTs, we have 25 vacancies and for paramedics, we have 70.
You said 17?
70, seven zero, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Our high school program. The fire department is currently inside and working right now in Vivian T. Thomas Medical Arts Center. We are in there. We have a certified of fire departments, MICRB certified instructor. The class began on March 3rd and it will end on May 20th. We have 14 students enrolled in that program. What we've done to try to continue our relationship with those kids, because this was our pilot program and starting this high school program back up. So what we thought we would do is we would roll those kids into the Summer Youth Works Program. And that's what we're doing. So we have registered as a work site. We have registered for 25 students and Chief Shiloh is going to host them for us at the Fire Academy. We're going to take them through different ranks of individuals in the fire department, going out to speak with them so that they can understand what fire services look like and what the opportunities are there. We're going to have some of our professional staff speak to them just so they will understand that there are not only sworn opportunities in the fire department, but there's also an opportunity for professional staff. So we're doing that. Actually, before we came here today, Baltimore City Public Schools did reach out to us. They have about 10 students at Patterson that they'd like to enroll into our youth works program. So we're taking a look at, one, if we can add the additional students, we think that we can. But we are trying to come together and determine internally what our funding source would be. Because you know, as an agency, you pay per student. So we are looking internally for how we would fund adding 10 additional students to our youth works program.
Thank you. Councilman Gray?
Thank you, Chair. On this note, I actually wanted to check in on the status of the Public Safety Apprenticeship Program that was passed on Council Burnett, my predecessor's tenure, and I had the pleasure of being involved in. While I appreciate the work that you guys are doing with Vivian Thomas and Patterson Park, there hasn't been a lot of visible progress on implementing the apprenticeship program, particularly within the fire department. And when we talk about these, we're talking about, you know, the vacancies we have on EMT side and dispatch. These are perfect places where our young students could actually contribute if we expand this citywide and not just into schools. So could you provide an update on where things stand and what challenges there may be affecting the rollout of this initiative, which is aimed to do the very thing that you're trying to do?
Absolutely. So this is our, this is the initiative that we began to try to start this program. Prior to any of us who are here now, prior to our involvement, there was apparently a program. However, there had not been much traction at all. So when I came in in August and started to take a look at it and I met with other chiefs internally and we created a framework of what that program would look like. Chief Shiloh was instrumental in helping us because she had witnessed others attempt this program. So what we did was we took a look at what we liked to see. We identified all barriers that anyone could tell us they had faced in the past. And so what we decided to do was because nothing had really transpired up until then, we took a look at all of the Baltimore City Public Schools that currently had CTE programs and we thought that would be a perfect start for us. So the goal is to expand citywide. However, this is our pilot that we just started in March to try to see exactly what we can do with them, how we can further build from this. So this is just our pilot. So that is the goal. But we wanted to, instead of constantly hearing about the barriers, we wanted to actually get involved and see what it is that we could do. So we reached out to Baltimore City Public Schools and this is just the start of us trying to get to that initial goal, I mean, to that end goal that we're looking for. And that is citywide and it is to take it back to an actual apprenticeship or cadet program that would be citywide, that would then serve as a feeder into the Baltimore City Fire Department.
Thank you for that answer. And this is not against you and I appreciate you starting. But persistent asking and asking and asking, we're still behind on where, you know, I'd see where we should be. And like I said, I appreciate Vivian T. Thomas. I appreciate Patterson Park. But, you know, kids at Digital Harbor, at Emerson, at any other school all around the city also need to have these opportunities as well. And so as you guys are expanding, I hope you are looking at, one, trying to do it, you know, as effectively as you can and efficiently as you can, but also looking at opening it up for kids all around the city and being very strategic with your next school. So we're just not concentrating in one area or in certain pockets, but we're making sure that kids all around the city are able to contribute to our fire department. And if the police were here, I would say the same thing to the police department as well. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilman Glover?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Do we have a community engagement team with the fire department?
As far as, in what aspect?
Liaisons that comes out, like the community association meetings and things of the nature that can kind of speak on behalf of the fire department. We do get issues at times and people call the office in reference to, you know, homes that were recently caught on fire, probably need to be boarded up, things of the nature. But they're reaching out to us. Of course, we're reaching out back to them with resources. But, you know, I think it'd be helpful if there was a community engagement team or someone that could come out to the community, explain particularly to our seniors that needs that information and wants to be provided that information. And also, we've, in the city, we've have an overwhelming, you know, majority of Latino communities coming in. And if you guys have like a bilingual advocate or someone that's, you know, in case there was a fire in reference to, you know, a Latino, you know, household, do we have someone there to kind of provide them the information that they need or to direct them, you know, where they need to go as we move forward?
Councilman, Chief Kensington White, thank you for that question. So in reference to the community meetings, what we typically do is try to make our local firehouses their point of contact for the community. They're in the community every day. They know the community best. So I think what we're looking at is making sure that, reinstituting, making sure they're engaging the community as they should be, as well as being at point of contact, right? So I know when I was in the northwest part of town as well, with Chief Stewart, our community president, knew our numbers, knew to contact us. We made our meetings regularly and was that link between the fire service and that community. So that's that piece. We'll definitely have that conversation and reengage in that. And in reference to the bilingual aspect, we usually lean on our partnership with the BPD. A lot of them have bilingual members at their access as well as language access line to then have that. And then all of our public education materials are published in multilingual aspects. So we do have Spanish most times for any of our handouts and things like that.
Okay, so just to clarify, so the local Indians that are in our districts, they're to come out to community associations to provide information to the community?
Yeah, they should be engaged in the community associations and we'll circle back.
So when we're going to start that up? I don't see any of them at any of the community association meetings. And again, you know, attend the meetings, but if the fire break out, you know, they got to roll out. But, you know, how can we implement that? Because I really don't see any of the meetings. And I know it'd be a great help. I mean, you guys do a great, you know, job. I mean, we don't get a whole lot of calls or negative calls when it comes to the fire department, you know? But we do have those conversations with seniors just want to know. I mean, we have those Saturdays that we go out, which has been great. I mean, they've been really receptive of us coming to their homes and at that time, you could also see the engagement between the fire department and the community, which is great. But, you know, we could just see more of a presence at those community associations, one or two firefighters. And again, if something break out, we know you guys just got to leave. But just to have those individuals there, those community meetings will be a great service, you know, to out to the city.
Let me speak with Chief Fire to make sure we can get that engagement, reinstitute and bolster and then we'll circle back.
Yep. And this, my colleague just said, even though those commander, the CRC meetings, you know, where we meet like once a month, where the presidents come to those community association meetings and they can give that information back to their community association. So remember the police stations, you know, from here and there. And I think that's a great opportunity for the commanders to come out and speak at those meetings. And again, those presidents will have that information to share with their community associations. I think that'll work as well.
Yes, sir.
Yep, all right. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the committee. Deputy Chief Laura Shiloh, the Director of Training for the Fire Department. You can go to the next slide. This just outlines our current recruit class data, what we currently have at the Fire Academy. The first one for 2404A has actually graduated. We usually split classes based on what they come in with as far as their EMS certifications. So that's why you'll see an A and B. The A class usually comes in with their EMT already and that shaves about three months off of their training. We currently have 2404B. They're going to graduate next month. 2501A and B, they just came in in January and they're scheduled to graduate on or around Halloween. And we have an EMS class that just started a couple of weeks ago. They should be graduating in August. So this outlines training hours quarter over quarter from 24 to 25. In '24, we had 830 recruit training hours. This current year, quarter three is 1,876 hours. And that just shows the number of recruit classes that we have out there. And then the field training, same thing. We've increased that training as well. We've gone up maybe 400 training hours for field members. What we've tried to do with that is we've rolled out a mobile training platform for large area searches and new equipment with training that goes along with it. Instead of having all of the units in the department come out to the Fire Academy, we've tried to go remote and have instructors go to them. So this was one of the new initiatives that we've rolled out based on some of the feedback we've gotten from the field as well as some of the after-action reports. You can go to the next one. This is implementation of training needs. So we have taken Board of Inquiry reports post Stricker Street as well as Linden Heights. Some of the things that we have been able to improve upon came out of those reports as well as the after-action reports that have been put out by Chief Id and Operations. Some of them, we've rolled out before the reports can even come out. So with respect to the Maydays and some of the grant-funded classes, we have an advanced firefighter removal class that came after Stricker Street where we are better able to rescue our own people once we get them out. EMS training on firefighters, just simple things like getting them out of their turnout gear is a huge thing that we identified as a need and rolling out pit crew CPR for firefighters. That, next slide, this one outlines all of those. We have had eight of the firefighter removal classes to date. 160 members trained. That, as I've mentioned previously, came right out of the Stricker Street report. FDNY reached out to us. They have a school that is dedicated strictly to firefighter removal. We developed our own class and through social media posts, we've had requests from departments across the country. So it's one of those areas that we don't often think about, but it's definitely a need. So this just shows the different departments that have reached out. Baltimore County, DC and Milwaukee all have created their own programs based on what we've taught. And the last class that we had, DC sent five of their members up. They asked if they could participate and that was the first jurisdiction that's actually participated in the training. And that's just a partnership relationship with other jurisdictions that we respond with in some mutual aid incidents. You can go to the next one. These are just our two major grants that are active at the moment. The FY '22 AFG grant. We have one additional class that we need to conduct and that will satisfy that entire grant. And the FY '23 grant, we have just started digging into that one and giving some training on those. The grant-funded classes will pay overtime for our members so that we don't have to put units out of service. That's all I got. I don't know if you have any questions?
Good afternoon, Chairman Conway. Gentlemen of the City Council, how's everybody today? For the record, my name is James Matts. I'm the Assistant Chief EMS. I'm joined today by Dr. Loner, our medical director, Dr. Benjamin J. Loner. Deputy Chief Timothy Collin is in charge of EMS administration as well as Deputy Chief Anissa Sawyer. One of the things that I think you'll probably see throughout the prior presentation as well as ours is the fire department is really data-rich. Chairman Conway, I don't know how many years we've been doing these. We've actually evolved into a set of dashboards. The dashboards lead to our data-driven decision-making, the things that we do. These are just quick snapshots. In the interest of the years of doing this, we've actually sped up instead of giving you 50,000 slides in death by PowerPoint. So we're going to try to speed along here for you. What this is, is a good representation of our top five ALS, Advanced Life Support as well as Basic Life Support Calls Year Over Year. The things that I would really just point out, if you look at quarter three of '24 over top of quarter three of '25, is that there's definitely been an increase. You're going to see that in some of my later slides. The top three calls are always the same type that we find year over year. For the serious type calls or advanced life support, those would be breathing problems, sick abdominal breathing or sick alert. And what you're going to find with that is there's been noted increases each year. Our Basic Life Support, which is our lower acuity, our lower priority calls, those top three calls are also increasing year over year. Those top three calls are sick, vehicle accidents and then abdominal pain or belly pain would be one of the prevalent ones that we see. This is just a representation of, we have several dashboards. And what I'm going to do is just cut through those to be able to show you year over year some of the things. This is one of our community metric boards and it breaks down basically the types of call determinants as well as the big three things, remember, with EMS calls. There's EMS incidents. What is that? Every EMS call, there's a unique incident number for that call. There's also an There's also an EMS response. A call like a cardiac arrest, there can be four vehicles on that unit, so you can have a lot more response units for that incident. And then lastly, those transports. Um, and looking at FY23 over FY24 and quarter three, the main thing to point out is that our EMS incidents have increased as well as our total responses, but that our overdose calls have actually gone down and we're gonna highlight that a little bit later. Um, one of the, the, this representation is really, I think, the best one, I think, going forward. I'll probably use this kind of a view to give us a better overview. But if you look at 23 over 24, uh, FY24 over FY23 of quarter three, what you're gonna find is that our total EMS incidents are up 1,000 calls quarter over quarter, year over year. Also, our responses are up 3,000 calls. Transports are up for that same quarter, 2,000 transports. And overall, our median response time to second call, um, sensitive calls has increased slightly at actually point two, which is really about 12-second difference year over year. Um, this was a hot topic, the last time we did this is our offload times. Our offload times are actually up, give or take roughly about three minutes. Bear in mind, it's starting to get warm. When it gets warmer, our times do go up. Um, I will tell you that we get a, a, a regular report weekly. Um, the regional average for last week was about 44 minutes. And look, median times look great for, for looking at data, cause it makes you look great. The real number you should be looking at is the 90th percentile. What, 90% of the time, how long does it take for us to get our units out of the hospital? Um, last week in the region, it was 44 minutes. Fire Department last week was running right about 49, 50 minutes, which is a lot better than during the pandemic, but we could do a lot better. One of the other slides that we try to do, this is year over year, to look at, what does this look at? This looks at our median and mean times, our scene times. What does that mean? How long does it take our units when we're on scene? And then on average, how long does it take our units to get out of the hospital? I'm here to tell you the year over year times are give or take a minute, so they're very close. Basically, year over year, we take about 15 minutes on one scene, which is a really good scene time. Um, when we actually get a unit there, we can get them and move. The, the backside of that is the average time for us getting out of the hospital is about 50 minutes, 51 minutes, so it's right about that timeframe. Um, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Loner. He's gonna talk about some of our, our mortality numbers as well as our CAREs data and he'll explain that for you. Dr. Loner?
Good afternoon, uh, Dr. Ben Loner. I'm an emergency and EMS physician with the School of Medicine. Privileged to serve as the Medical Director for Baltimore City Fire Department. Uh, this is, as Chief Matts knows, my favorite topic. Okay, so uh, what we're gonna do is talk a little bit about mortality and, and what I've chosen to do is we report quarterly, but at the end of 2024, the CAREs metrics just came out. So I have all of the dashboards, but I wanted to highlight the progress from 2022 to 2024. So this is Baltimore City specific data and I wanna call your attention to a couple of numbers. Uh, number one, overall survival is usually in the single digits for a couple of other places. And what that means is survival at discharge, which is what we really care about. And cardiac arrest, over time, it's very difficult to nudge that number above 10%. Baltimore City has made steady progress. I think one of the opportunities for improvement, and I wanna call your attention to 2024, do you see the bystander intervention rate? Now, 25% has been a steady increase from when, uh, I know I first started, there was a lapse in like three years and then we had, we were in the teens. So I think this is a credit to uh, community engagement, to bystander CPR. And I also, I also want to highlight the collaborative efforts uh, of 911, my colleague to my right, Director Reddick. We recently completed the training of over 60 911 call specialists. Uh, and one of the things we do is we, we, we work diligently to recognize cardiac arrest and move first response from the emergency response to what happens on the telephone. So I, I hope, uh, it is my hope that we will continue to see improved numbers. The, the final thing that I wanted to call your attention to on this is there's a, there's a term called UDT bystander and that's basically on that first large data box, we're at 48.6%. And what that means is what's the survival with semi-intact neurologic to recovery when all of the chains of survival um, are intact? And that number rivals uh, other numbers within the city and even in high-performing systems. So uh, we definitely have work to do, but you know, our promise is to be transparent and to acknowledge a lot of the challenges and opportunities that we have.
Yeah, I, and Dr. Loner, I, I knew you were gonna go to UDT. Um, and it's good to see the progress that we've made in the last couple of years. I think this is pretty remarkable when you think about what it takes to actually move this number in the right direction. So I, I, I wanna applaud you guys for that. Um, I, I, it, it would help um, to maybe get, give a little context on the community engagement efforts that we've done in order to get this number up. Um, and then two, I think the other question I have is around um, uh, I'm, I'm gonna tie this to the conversation around overdoses and um, what we can do to have a similar impact around overdoses and people's intervention, whether it be with naloxone or uh, sternal rubs or whatever it may take to identify um, someone's state and intervene to hopefully save their life before um, it becomes a fatality. So I'm, uh, if, if you could talk about what we've done to increase this number over the last uh, four years? Um, and then, you know, what it might take to take a similar approach in interventions around overdoses?
Thank you for the question. These are, these are also complex and two somewhat different questions. So the first one, um, I would, I would point to uh, a lot of community engagement with respect to in-the-city schools, uh, training of the dispatchers and community outreach. I know Chief Cullen's team is also engaged in that as well. That is also a much broader discussion than happens within the Fire Department. There's also a lot of good work going and uh, going, happening in schools and the communities. I do wanna emphasize from the Fire Department standpoint, early recognition is something that I feel very strongly about and hopefully as we report that data to CAREs, uh, there's a part that's now Special Dispatch, we can report continued progress. With respect to overdoses, which is near and dear to all of our hearts, I, I have to say that, that there, there's a mixed message there too, because what we've succeeded in, and, and you'll see according to the numbers, is we have, we have, we have definitely distributed a ton of naloxone, which gets administered in cardiac arrest. The problem is if the patient's heart stopped, naloxone isn't helpful. So in the setting of cardiac arrest, there's, you know, there's a lot of uh, cognitive disconnect, meaning, y- you know, the police and bystanders will give people a lot of naloxone, but if the heart has already stopped, it is not that effective. So we need to continue to push the awareness that breathing is of the most importance. And I think that's a, that is part and parcel of the education that we deliver, not only to the community, but also our paramedics and to our dispatchers.
Yeah, I think it's uh, thank you for clarifying that. And I think that's the sort of knowledge piece that I think may not be obvious to everyone. Uh, if someone sees someone on the street, they may not know what to look for or what to do to clarify whether or not it is an overdose or if someone's just, you know, unhoused. Um, and I think that difference is important and how to handle those situations is especially important. So um, I, I just, I, I think the lessons that we've learned over the last four years or three years here um, can be helpful in thinking about how we equip folks in the public uh, to be helpful. Um, so just, you know, my mind's running from those different perspectives. Um, I've got questions from uh, Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so talking about the, the EMS situation with um, these, you know, the, the very, very long wait times across the state of Maryland as well as in the city, um, as well as the overtime situation that, that our EMTs and paramedics are going through and, and all that type of stuff, I got a, a line of questions here. Um, the, so the first question, um, I kind of open-ended probably for Chief Wallace, but um, the $33 million in, in overtime that we had this year, right? And, and looking forward, I know in the, the last quarterly meeting, that was something that um, the Fire Department had talked about trying to figure out solutions for moving forward. Can you just talk through um, what, what has been done and what the department is working on doing in regards to that?
In, in regards to identifying it or, or controlling it, how?
Yeah, I guess I would ask for reducing, maybe it's a part and parcel question, but I think mainly the, the reliance, the over-reliance on overtime.
So, so not all of the overtime that, that you see accumulated either quarterly, uh, end of year is, is specific to staffing issues. Um, there's, there's a decent amount of overtime and, and Chief Shiloh just covered it with regard to training. When we get these training grants, we uh, we aggressively approach the application looking for, for two outcomes. One, the ability to um, possibly buy equipment that we, that we may not have in general fund. But two, and right now, more importantly, is to train our personnel. So within those grants, oftentimes what you see is what's called um, overtime and backfill. So we, we can use those for salaries, be it, um, you and I come in off-duty, we're on overtime, we're, we're gonna um, we're gonna take the classes. Or we have people that are working today and we detail them away from the company and we backfill them with people that are on overtime. So there's, there's a component there um, that's involved in that. We know that year over year, structurally, we've got about $5 million of overtime just for FLSA, for our, our EMS personnel. That's work hour related.
FLSM?
Fair, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, it's Fair Labor Standards Act. Basically EMS is exempt from the hours. So we're structurally required to pay overtime, the, the way the, the um, schedule is written, it's roughly 42, 43 hours per person. It works out to be roughly 20 hours of overtime per person per month. So when you do the math out, it, it's about $5 million in structural. It doesn't matter who's running the Fire Department, anybody in the front of the room, you're gonna have $5 million in overtime because of the structural overtime. So that's one thing to just point out for everybody to be aware of.
Alright, so there's, so there's that factor. Um, we, we, you know, we, we're always gonna have special events, we're always gonna have art scape, we're always gonna have preknus, things like that, so that requires it as well. And then, you know, finally, there's, there are the staffing issues where, where overtime is being used. When we were at a time where um, our, our, our staffing numbers were, were lower than what they were, compounding on top of the overtime issue was um, a factor of apparatus being out of service. So what would happen, we didn't have enough staff that even wanted to work overtime. And as such, uh, especially during the weekends, we would have apparatus out of service. As our census numbers have come up, our overtime has somewhat as well. However, our in-service time has improved dramatically. So as a department, we're fully staffed on a daily basis um, with regard to field force. So as a result of the numbers being higher, what we're, what we're doing is we're breaking out, where are those, where are those areas of overtime? So that we're gonna be able to show that. Um, I'm optimistic we'll be able to show that when we have our budget hearing, or at least better explain it. Um, the other thing we're doing is our um, our Chief Financial Officer, she is now, we're doing random audits a week on, on individuals with high numbers of overtime to see exactly what's going on there. Um, I've not found any indications of, you know, anything malfeasance going on. Um, but the final thing I will say, I don't have the ability to tell someone, you can't work overtime. I believe our system is built um, to, to not only identify who's available for overtime, but properly place them, meaning we call them buckets and it goes by hours. So if, if, if I have a, an overtime bucket per se, that has, I don't know, 100 hours of overtime in it and, and you have in your bucket 50 hours, right? We both sign up for overtime, there's one slot available, you're automatically gonna get it by virtue of the system because you have less time than me. So there's an attempt to try to keep that um, with regard to work shifts, there's an attempt to try to keep that, you know, fair along the way. So I know that's kind of a, there's a lot going on right now inside the Fire Department to attempt to, you know, corral this and get this better under control.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. And this is a um, I think there's a lot going on within the system, including plenty of things outside, well outside the Fire Department that are compounding a lot of these issues. Um, do you, just crossed my mind, um, do you, Chief Matts, do you have a sense of the number of, like the average number of hours of overtime that a typical um, EMT personnel is, is doing in a month?
I, I don't have an average and, and, and Chief Matt's just said the same thing. However, given what we're doing right now to, to improve how we track, that is a question that I, I believe we could turn around some data for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to make that a, a formal committee question. Um, Mr. Chair, for uh, and the average number of overtime hours for our EMS personnel, so.
How, how long would that take to pull?
Within a week, we, it, within a week, it's easy. That's an easy level.
By Monday, fine?
That'd be awesome.
Alright.
And then, uh, last question on my end, I just noticed um, the, the increase in ALS and BLS calls um, was, is not, and it was surprising to me just because I know that both um, violent crime and um, overdoses are, are going down substantially. So that was not intuitive to see these increases. Do y'all have any sense of what is going on there?
No, sir. Uh, really what we're finding is that the, the call volume and the day-to-day call volume is starting to rebound to pre-pandemic levels. We're still slightly down from that, but it's, it's starting to creep up to where it was. Um, one of the biggest problems that we have is our low acuity, low priority call. That's why you're gonna hear a bunch of the innovative programs, we're gonna talk about in a little bit in some subsequent slides. But it's still roughly 38% of our call volume a day, or roughly uh, 35,000 calls a year is low priority, low acuity. What's that mean? It's probably calls, you probably don't have to call 911 and we're trying to look and farm those out in better ways. Maybe you'd be better served going to an urgent care center or something to that effect. You may be using telemedicine and talk to a doc, there's things like that. We're trying to take that pressure down. Why? It takes the workload off on the street, it eases us up in the hospitals and so forth. Cause when you go into the hospital with a low acuity call, you're gonna get to the back of the line. They're gonna be looking for the sickest people coming through. So we're trying to, to take some pressure and decant the system as best we can.
Yeah, that, that totally makes sense. And then um, my last, last question on this topic.
Last, last, last?
Right.
Okay.
I promise. Um, the um, have y'all, and this may be in, and I apologize for ignorance, but if, and this may be in the budget and about to come out, but um, do you have a projection for overtime for FY, overtime pay for FY26 and how that compares to what we ended up, the actual cost in FY25?
No, I don't, I don't think we have that, that overtime yet. I, I think what, what really should be understood and quite frankly, expected is as there's, as our census numbers come up, um, that's gonna come down, right?
Census numbers being the number of personnel.
Uh, yes, sir. And we, we, as, as was previously stated, on, on the fire suppression side of the field, we're on, we're just about full. Matter of fact, we may be full with the academy class that's in right now. The, the struggle is, is finding what I like to call those specialty positions and paramedics are in that. They're just not there. We've spoken about that before, um, you know, nationwide, you're looking somewhere between 30 and 35% shortage. So we have um, we're, we're looking at a couple of options and, and how we wanna change uh, EMS a little bit. We're still working through some things, but uh, we are finding that we're successful in attracting uh, EMTs that are already trained, not, not, not people that wanna be EMT candidates and, and move through school, but actually there are EMTs out there. We're very competitive right now in, in the EMT market. Again, in the paramedic market, the challenge is not only, the, the main challenge is they're, they're limited, they're just not there. So we are all in, in the metropolitan region, competing for a very small yet same pool of people.
To touch on that point, I know we have, we talked about this in the past, the difficulty of hiring paramedics. Uh, what about uh, our ability to help EMTs take that next step? Is there interest in?
So we, we actively are working with the, the local unions. Um, we, we're in our second cohort at this time. Um, we have people that are either enrolled in Hartford County, BCCC, um, Trinity College, Baltimore County, which is Essex, used to be called Essex. What we try to do is to give them time off when they, when they, their classes correlate to us, we give them an opportunity to take vacation. It does impact us operationally, but the idea is to get those people at the backend. First cohort, we had, we had about 10 or 12 people in, I think three or four at this time have already been licensed. The other part of that are currently just finishing up as we hit spring. We also have another group of, of roughly 10 to 15 that just went in. Um, it, it hurts us, but then it helps us. So we're trying to kind of balance it too as we go through. The bad problem for me is if everybody decided to be on the same shift and went, I'm gonna have to spread the wealth. I can't put everybody all in my talks in one basket. Um, so that part's going well. Years and years ago, we used to do our own training, we can't anymore. Right about 2016, 2017, they took that ability away from us. We used to do uh, mirrored classes where we would teach day and night and mirror the, the shifts. The problem is when they made the transition, we have to be tied in with a um, Institute of Higher Education like BCCC and so forth. We're trying to work with them now. That's an expensive endeavor. We're trying to work with them now, that's an expensive endeavor. To be honest, a lot of the people that are teaching for the colleges are our people, so I'm trying to work that out, but that's a long term, that's a little bit of a slower, kind of a bang for our buck kind of thing. And then, once again, we're, we're trying to, like Chief Wallace said, attract people that are already licensed. Like Councilman Gray had talked about earlier, if we try to teach EMT right out of the gate, that, that's a hard, hard class. It's not the pen and paper like we took in the years past, it's all computer-based. Right out the gate, I think it has about a 50, 55% fail rate first time through, which is very shocking, and then we, we gotta try to nurse that through. One of the things that, that Dr. Hart's working on, the one thing that's nice about EMT is there's no expiration date on the class. So if I start today, I don't have to finish in a month or three months. There's talk about maybe stringing that out over two years in a, in a high school program, where we can kind of spoon-feed that more difficult thing. One of the things we're finding with people that are new coming in, there's a lot of critical thinking skill problems, there's a lot of math problems, and we're trying to work and bridge those gaps, um, to try to do that. I think some of the things that Director Reddick's doing with the 911 program, I think will go a long way as well. So we're trying to hit it from a lot of different angles to try to improve it.
Do, do we have an incentive program to incentivize EMTs to pursue the paramedic, uh, paramedic, uh, track?
You mean, aside from, they get a pay raise when they, when they actually complete that? There's, there's a pay that goes commensurate with that, that job. There's no recruitment retention bonus at this stage in the game, if that's what you're, you're asking me for.
Yeah, I wonder, noting that we have difficulty finding them out in, in the public, if it might be, in some ways, more efficient or effective for us to identify choice candidates and spread the bet, or spread the wealth across our units, so that it doesn't, you know, affect us too much operationally, and maybe cherry pick some folks that we think would be good candidates and provide some sort of incentive. I, I think there's an opportunity for a broader conversation here, but we don't have to solve that problem today, but.
Right, and I think, I, I think we have a lot there, I think what we need to do is just do a better job of, of lifting it up. We do have tuition reimbursement, you know, as, as many agencies do, we have that, we've got the ability, as, as Chief Matt said, to work with them and try to get them time off, but it's, it's hard for us to balance at a time when, you know, we're, we're being questioned about overtime, because that causes overtime. So we're, we, we believe in the investment, we're still trying to get our arms around that a little bit, but I think, I think we're better off trying to grow from the inside, and we're gonna be more successful than what we're gonna be right now from trying to pull them from the outside in, because they're just not out there. So if the interest internally exceeds what's available outside, you know, it, it, it's a no-brainer for us. So we're, we're definitely working on that, there's, there's also some, you know, maybe some things through current labor negotiations that I'm trying to put in that, that may help as well. So that, right now, really is, is one of the highest blips, if not the highest blip on the radar for us, is, is paramedics.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry to intervene in your line of question, I, I'd like some sort of plan, I, I don't know exactly what my ask here is, but I would love to hear what an incentive program or a concerted effort to help EMTs pursue the paramedic track internally might look like, and I can't do the math now, but I'm sure with the proper incentives and otherwise, we can figure out what makes sense, and the difference between trying to go out and get versus grooming our own folks internally might be something worth strongly considering, so, yeah.
That covered everything. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the low acuity calls. I know that in previous hearings, I had asked about how or what training can, can be deployed to 911 dispatchers to kind of disseminate, you know, disseminate those calls better, because once that call goes out, it gets dispatched and then it, you know, goes out. So Director Reddick, can you speak to how you all are developing training or technical assistance, or even just connection with telehealth? And I know we were talking about nurses being integrated into, into the 911 operation. Can you speak more about how and what's the status of like that process that we were talking about before?
Okay, I'm gonna start it and then I'll probably give it to Chief Matt or Dr. Lerner. In reference to how we actually code the calls in beginning, it starts with our protocol, one of the softwares we use is the Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocol, and based off of the questions that we ask, how the patient answers it, well, the caller answers it. And then it lets us know what level of call then we need to actually send it out at, as, or dispatch. Of course, someone that's non-breathing is gonna get a higher dispatch than someone who is bleeding from like a small cut or something like that. So from that point, that's when it goes from fire communications and they dispatch it out, and I'll let Chief.
And real quick, before we transition, who controls, who controls that protocol that you all use? Is that a national protocol?
Yes, it's a national protocol.
It's a national protocol that can't be deviated from? Okay.
Right, it, it can't be deviated from, however, we do have a committee that we all sit on, and when it comes down to the coding process of it, we all sit at a table and we make the decisions on how do we want to dispatch it out, on what, how many units do we want? Do we wanna advanced life support versus a basic life support unit to go out there? Or how many fire engines, if it's a box, how many? So we all come to the table and actually start deciding, and even with the police codes that we use, of how do we want these dispatched out, what is the necessary resources that goes out with these coding? So based off the codes, we all has, we all have decided at the table that based off of what the code is and how it's answered and what's needed, we, that's how the dispatch is going to occur on it. So Chief Matt, that's all you.
So for, so for the 35,000 that you had just mentioned, how are they coded? And where are we in the process of kind of looking through those 35,000 to see if we can delineate for other codes?
Shoot, that's only about an eight-point question, but I'll try to get through it with you real quick. So I, I'm lucky, Dr. Lerner is one of a team of four docs that we have, just to talk from the coding piece, we have a bunch of docs, and specifically Dr. Nussbaum, I think you've met before, we've had in here, you know, is it four or five years ago?
We have four years of data.
They've analyzed four years of data, and what they look at from the doctor's side is what is the lowest security call with the lowest chance of having any kind of adverse outcome or bad patient outcome?
Yes, yes.
So they've analyzed four years of data and they've identified those call determinants that really probably don't need anybody to go to. The problem is with any kind of change, we gotta implement that slow.
Yes.
That's where we get into, and we're gonna talk about it in a couple of other slides, but there's a lot of little toolboxes, the little tools we're working on. One of those is telemedicine?
Yes.
Telemedicine is more, we kind of lost the call from the 911 side, once we've already gotten there and we realize that, that Ms. Porter is, is not that sick, but she's sick, let's get a doc on board, let's see if we can't either get a prescription called into her pharmacy, or let's get her somewhere else to get her taken care of, that's telemedicine. The other piece that we're doing is nurse triage, which we talked about. Nurse triage has been forever and a day, and I'm happy to report we're at like the finish line.
Oh, very good.
Get ready to run through it, yes.
Very good.
Right, so we, we.
For implementation?
We did an RFP that went through, and we're at the final stages of getting, I don't know if I can really announce that at this point.
I wouldn't.
But, but what we're doing, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for saving me there. But what the idea is, remember I told you we lost the call once we already got there?
Yes, yes.
The idea with the nurse triage is, they're gonna look at all these alpha, those low acuity calls, low priority calls, they'll farm those off electronically to this gentleman sitting down in, in Texas, and they go through a diagram and they decide, okay, can we take you here, do we have to do this? Oh, guess what, we can send them to Jai Medical Center, we'll use one of our contracted AMBOs to transport that person to a center outside of our normal system.
So before you go further, I wonder, so you mentioned it's being farmed out to Texas, there are community health workers and community, just within institutions that could possibly kind of farm and take these contracts, like, for local resources? Have you all explored that?
So part of that is, first of all, we did an RFP across the board for everybody who could handle that.
Okay.
That's where we got down to where we are now.
Yes.
What they're looking for is not only that, I'm looking for a group of, of resources in the community where I can send those people to.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's what we're at this stage of right now. Matter of fact, there was just an email last week where we're trying to figure out, what are those resources, what is the real-time availability? Okay, you're at XYZ Medical Center, I have three beds a day, I can send people to?
Yes.
That's where we're at right now, we're at that final step of that.
So one of the reasons why I bring that up, we're gonna have a conversation next week about the pilots and the 14 ads and meds that use city services utilization. I wonder if there can be some sort of compromise there whereby we are utilizing their, you know, their institutional operations, community health workers, community engagement opportunities for our city services as a trade-off.
Mm-hmm.
That, that may be something that we could, you know, consider on the backend, but it would provide a, it would provide a base for community health workers in the city, hopefully to be developed into nurses, so it provides them with real-world experience for a pipeline moving forward.
Sure.
Okay, my next question actually had to do with the mortality cardiac arrest tracking. How does this, how do these data integrate into the intergovernment operations between the 911 fire department and also the public health agencies that support you all in this initiative?
So thank you for the question. CARES is a nationally reportable database, and we regularly socialize the numbers. I think to an earlier point, overdose complicates a lot of these things, so we use the data to inform treatment decisions, whether that's early deployment of automated external defibrillators, whether it's the use of improving 911 codes. So the data is shared in order to alter response profiles, and there's actually a lot we share with 911 all the time. For example, there's a big discussion about the utilization of AI to recognize abnormal breathing patterns, so, you know, the principle's transparency, and I think the shaping of response profiles apply to, to these data in terms of cardiac arrest.
Thank you. Are there any other agencies besides 911? So we understand that overdose is a very complex, very complex issue. I'm looking for more of integration into medical software like CRIS.
It already goes, yeah, we, we, we look at CRIS, absolutely.
And, and so using, using that model, we are able to kind of bring those data back and my later, the later point of my question is, how does that influence the administrative guidance that we are using moving forward? So I'm trying to connect the dots between the low acuity calls, because we know that a lot of those low acuity calls, they, one, they may not need to have 911, but we also have a large subsection of, of the data that's coming in that is related to overdose. And so I'm trying to make sure we have the distinction between administrative guidance between those two, because those are the large, those are the larger, you know, the larger initiatives that are coming into the city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So this is a very, this is a very complicated question that extends far beyond cardiac arrest. So one thing, and I think we're, there's a lot of things that we're talking about downstream with respect to how we integrate. One of the, one of the fascinating things is utilization of, of Goldie, which is a program that bridges the gap between hospitals and everything else. So it actually helps establish a bridge and a sharing of information, so you can basically match the determinant, the patient, the high utilization. That's something that's part and parcel of our, which we'll talk about a little bit later, of the funded ARPA B Corp event. So there is a lot of interdisciplinary collaboration, which is actually spurred on by overdose, so I am optimistic that the use of some of those things will help build a better environment with which we can share. Data sharing is really, is really challenging, especially in the 911 system and even outside of the city entity, but I'm optimistic that with our discussions with overdose and other things, we'll be able to share them better. So a lot of that's going on. And I, I would welcome the opportunity to talk about, I know this is a very complex and again, intricate topic in terms of how we operationalize this data, because I wanna, when we say low acuity, I mean, low acuity is a little bit of a misnomer, because a lot of these patients, as you mentioned, have a lot of needs. So if you have shortness of breath and, for example, you have a transplanted organ and immunocompromised, you're gonna call 911 and say you don't feel so well. So I can say that somebody is weak and that's gonna get coded as a low acuity call, and, and so the, the data is reported as low acuity, but these patients have significant needs that may not be immediately met, which is why we look at the determinants constantly. And when we, we looked at a lot of the literature, in addition to our 4,000 calls, outcomes, utilization of CRIS, to inform what we push out to nurse triage. So there's a lot of information sharing, a lot of integration of, of data.
So am I, am I correct in understanding that this low acuity call is like kind of the catch-all?
Yes, it's not specific. Yes, ma'am.
All right, cool, thank you.
Yes, that's correct. And you'll see the data, and I, and I hope to show this to you when we, when we talk about telling 911, because you'll, you'll see how this, how this plays out in a, you know, bottom line in a city with, with a significant burden of social determinants of health. So our job is try to be responsive to it and try to tailor our response profiles to accommodate. In the interest of time, let's, this is just a comparison of other ones, and there's a transcription error, which I apologize, was not caught. On the left of that slide is not Baltimore City, that's Baltimore County, so you can see Ustine Survival, it's the incident county of Baltimore, and that just shows you that the Ustine numbers are in the bottom, the overall survival rates are slightly higher, and you can see the bystander intervention rates are, are higher, and we can certainly talk about some of the, some of the strategies that have employed by Howard. It also has to do with where the arrests are and also how they kind of operationalize that response. But this is a comparison that we do when we report the Ustine numbers to Baltimore City, Prince George's and Howard County, I'm sorry, Baltimore County on the left. And we can continue progressing to the other ones if you'd like to, I know there's a lot of questions.
Do you want to talk about CPC a little bit?
CPC is essentially, one or two is the highest number, so thank you, Chief Matt. CPC on the bottom is basically cerebral performance core, that's the number that we care about. Those are the people that actually walk out of the hospital from cardiac arrest with little to minimal disability. The higher those numbers are, it's a surrogate marker for a higher performing system. Now, again, our numbers are gonna be higher because we have more cardiac arrest than literally any jurisdiction in Maryland. Survival-based strategies, so what are we doing? We talked about a lot of these. I, I do, we do 100% review of cardiac arrest, that's every single call, every single intubation, or every single advanced airway intervention. We also are doing CPR lifelinks, which is essentially that communication between 911 and also our fire communications. These are ongoing things that we hope will increase our survival. So not only do we have additional training, we also send people to the Resuscitation Academy, which is hosted twice a year in Howard County. We can go to the next slide, too. This is a, this is a, what we presented to city council, the ask was, and again, or city stat, rather, the ask was to kind of talk about how we do these metrics, and this is something that is not only mandated in terms of our quality assurance plan, but this is, this is kind of the, the complexity and it represents what we look at. All of the uses of ketamine in our jurisdiction, we look at all of the cardiac arrests, we have a, a ton of data with respect to behavioral health diversion, and this is, as you mentioned earlier, how we kind of tailor the system to respond a little bit more smartly. And I would argue that, you know, this is, this, the complexity can't be overstated. As Director Reddick mentioned, she gets 80,000 calls a month and she has to get these calls out within 60 seconds. As an emergency physician working in Baltimore, I, I can't even determine a life threat within like 60 seconds. So we're asking people with, with comparatively different training, which is about 25 hours in medical quality dispatch, to make these decisions, and you can see the burden is especially high and heavy in jurisdictions with high EMS utilization, such as, such as this one. We can go to the next slide. That's an example of, of, of how difficult sometimes it can be to review, so we give people a report card, the technology's fairly fascinating, so on the left, we can give people a graphical representation, now we don't give this to bystanders, but, so the crews that respond to cardiac arrest gives you a visual analysis of how well your compressions are, and, and we actually can drill down, and this is the importance of paramedics, and, and that's another topic which I would welcome the opportunity to talk about forever. There is nothing, there's no more music to a medical director's ears than having to figure out how to train 70 more paramedics in time, but when you get a LifePak 15 to the scene of an emergency, when you actually have the technology, you can really drill down on what's going on into the resuscitation. So that's somebody that had actually been intubated with a tube down their throat, and you could actually look at the quality of CPR, and we provide that to every one of our clinicians after an arrest. You can go to the next slide. We're gonna talk a little bit about the clinical metrics, you can proceed as well. This is, so all of these dashboards are also reported, and I know Chief, I'd showed some dashboards earlier with fire suppression. A lot of the clinically significant and clinically important calls, whether it's an endotracheal tube, which is a breathing tube, whether it's the use of medicine, whether it's stroke, we actually look at all those metrics, we trend those metrics, so we can understand how to improve the clinical care. And this is, as you can imagine, always a challenge, especially in a workforce that's challenged with a proportion, a higher proportion of basic life support, right? How do you, how do you respond to the, the majority of calls with people with different training and so forth? So something that we do all the time, and that's just basically looking at our stroke, our stroke metrics and end tidal metrics. You can go to the next slide, too. This is just a slide without dissecting this to tell you, every time that somebody, again, has a breathing tube placed, this is something that is, that can be the matter of life and death. So we have rolled out video laryngoscopes, which is essentially a video TV that helps people look at the airway, and that has actually improved our success rates. Again, I think this also shows that, that we can probably increase the distribution of these things, would love to have them on every truck, but right now, they are on our EMS supervisor vehicles. The cost is not at all insignificant. I'm going to go over select mitigation strategies and then, and then hit on a couple of key points. These are all the things that we're doing because I, I think this has been said, yes, we could, we could do a lot with 20 more ambulances, but there's an old adage in 911 that says you really can't respond your way out of a crisis because it's just, you know, the numbers will always increase. So, we're looking at utilizing 911, the nurse triage line and alternative destination strategies and dispatcher form, which is, which is arguably the most important. And finally, the dispatcher form and a national, another national publication had published on this, I think we looked at this last month. And there are a lot of things that identify as very safe determinants. So, we are not basically objectively saying, you know, what's low acuity by a medical director's determination? We're looking at national standards to modify our dispatch criteria. So, in the, in the operational stage, when somebody calls 911 and they meet one of those preset determinants, we take the burden off of our call takers and we give it to a trained provider. And what's very important, another trained clinician, what's very important though, is we preserve that standard of care. And if you look nationally, it is the dispatch nurses to triage which does this. And the, the companies that do this with sufficient volume oversight and dare I say malpractice insurance are a little bit few and far between. We can continue to the next slide. So, you'll hear a lot with my colleague, Chief Cullen to the left, the ARPA heroes. B Corp collaboration was funded, so thank you for your support to anybody that's been involved in that. That is going to be a departmental wide, you know, you spoke earlier about sharing data. The stakeholders on that B Corp project are Department of Health, Community Connection Teams, PEP, Office of Homeless Services. And trying to herd everyone in a room to kind of get together to, to really do these metrics has been somewhat of a challenge, but it is going to be well worthwhile in the, in the investment because the overall goal is going to be to link patients to care and to also reduce the amount of numbers that go to 911. This is a, this is a, the 911 program, so we did receive some innovative recognition for this. So, this is where if an ambulance or a fire suppression apparatus gets to the scene of an emergency, they can call an emergency physician. This is a very interesting slide because we're lower than 400 after the inception of this program in April 2024. And what this tells you is that all low acuity isn't low acuity. And if you look at the calls that are not eligible, patients may need transport, not surprising, you've heard that from me since for the past four years. Patients may need a prescription, they may need a ride, the doctor's office may not be open. So, we're able to divert about 60% of people that call this particular program, but the social determinants of health and the vast majority of contributing factors make this a strategy that is very difficult to sustain. So, we're going, our plan is to integrate this, the telemedical stuff into our nurse triage line. So, we will still preserve the capability where our medics and our EMTs can call. We will put that to the nurse and continue utilizing 911 to make sure we match patients to the resources they need.
So, just to give you a quick update, we're up to 362 as of yesterday. In addition, I would like to point out the next two things we're going to talk about. We did receive Mako. 2024 Mako Award went to 911 and Dr. Lonner and the work that 911 and the team did on behavioral health diversion. We also got the Mako Award in 2023. So, go ahead.
That's the continued, and again, all these dashboards, we happy to report all this data. There is a lot of data. So, what I will do is share a specific with you. This just shows you, again, we're increasing the eligible calls that are eligible for diversion and what this tells you in the ideal world, this is a, a great example of you talked about utilizing data. So, this is BCRI, this is BHSP, Department of Health, 98Aid. And what happens is if they meet a specific determinant, we're able to contact them and this was resulted in increased deployment of mobile crisis teams, decreased deployment of police, decreased deployment of emergency medical resources. But I want to point out that the numbers of these calls are also, when you look at the larger burden, are, you know, of scale, it's difficult. We're diverting probably anywhere from 200 to 300 per week, but in a system that runs 160 to 70,000 911 emergency calls, it's difficult to sometimes feel the impact, but it doesn't make it any less important. This is a drill down on behavioral health diversion that looks at what happens to it. Sometimes we actually, the volume is too high and we're not eligible to divert, but we are able to connect a smaller number of patients and actually avoid the 911 call altogether. And I want to point out that I don't think this is, this indicates a lack of success. The fact that we're able to co-deploy and connect people to BCRI is something that is challenging to measure, but it still results in a, a positive linkage to care. So, what are we doing in terms of clinical, clinical innovation of progress? Two more slides. So, again, the, the opportunity to talk about all this is appreciated. Number one, we have positive pressure breathing apparatus. Now, this can currently, according to protocol, only be utilized by paramedic or advanced EMT personnel, but we have rolled those out on all of our first, first response fire suppression units. This year, so thank you to Chief Cullen and Chief Sawyer, we will be rolling out ultrasound, which will help us to identify high acuity patients. We also partnered with a local company to roll out hemorrhage control strategies such as seal spray. That's an ongoing trial. We are the first in the, the metropolitan area to try this. It's basically aerosolized combat gauze because obviously we have a, a patient population in need. And the next slide talks about whole blood, which is, you know, when I talk about bystander CPR and everything else, this is something I think that is a, a very important tool in the toolbox. Surrounding us right now, we have several jurisdictions that are onboarding whole blood. Sinai Hospital is, is working with the Red Cross to be a regional repository of this. So, right now, this project is not funded, but what I want to point out is that currently in whole blood in the state, the Maryland State Police have this, my critical care transport team, Carroll County, Howard County, Frederick County, and this continues to increase. So, I think especially as a jurisdiction which I expect to be a high utilizer, this is, I think, something that we want to look forward to. DC is up to their 200th unit as of last week.
Hold on, Chief Lonner, Councilman Porter.
Thank you so much. What is the cost?
This is a great question. So, the cost is twofold. The cost to roll this out, if you're assuming, let's say, two capable units, just to give you a, to give you an idea, the startup fees are about $250,000 to $300,000. It's about $500 per unit. We have been working with national, national teams, the pre-hospital whole blood coalition. And for the first time, this happened in 2024, there is a reimbursable code. So, if we transfuse a unit, we will able to, we will be able to recoup the cast, the cost of that unit. So, that will likely pay for it, but it is a significant investment because the product is not only precious, it also expires. So, the cost is not insignificant.
And what's the expiration?
So, the expiration of whole blood is seven to 21 days. It has to be rotated.
Okay. You say rotated, is that through centrifuge or?
Oh, thank you, thank you for the clarification, meaning that the, the stock has to be rotated. So, you put the whole blood in coolers and you work with a designated blood bank. That blood bank would be responsible for swapping the product out at whatever interval that is compliant with the, the expiration date.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Of course.
And in those scenarios, the blood that would be nearing its useful life wouldn't necessarily be wasted, it would just be used in some other scenario, I'm presuming?
That's the idea and thank you for that question as well. What happens for the quote unquote expired units is the reason why the, the lifespan is shorter. So, we give it back to the hospital. The hospital then rotates it in terms of the centrifuge and what's called fractions it out. So, you get platelets, you get clotting factors and you give that to other people. And I have to say that the programs that inception this the correct way, the amount of blood wastage is extremely low, which is good. So, my critical care program has had blood now for three years. We wasted quote unquote one unit due to a, a temperature malfunction.
Thanks for clarifying. Please continue.
Thank you.
Timothy Cullen, Deputy Chief EMS Administration. I'll be reviewing the next two programs that I'm responsible for. So, at the last hearing, we introduced our chase car pilot program, which is our advanced life support upgrade unit that focuses on high acuity incidents requiring a higher level of care for a moderate to critically, critically ill patients. This slide kind of gives an update on our progress. Program's been operational for a little over a year now, April 22nd of 2024. We've responded to over 2,500 incidents as a part-time unit, seven to seven daily. And it continues to be successful in delivering rapid advanced life support treatment. And this was reflected in the data. 88% of the incidents are for high acuity calls. And again, that's our moderate to critically ill patients. Our call, call volume remains consistent on a month-to-month basis. Our median response time remains around eight minutes. And out of our top 10 call types, the top three continue to be respiratory distress, non-breathing and unconscious patients. And then this next section is about our community paramedic program. This is our harm reduction, community health, mobile resource unit that connects patients to care and resources onsite in real time. Our main focus is still on calls in areas of suspected substance use. This is a cumulative total since our programs start. 550 911 patients, and these are the patients that we encounter on emergency calls for suspected substance use. The team responds to as a support unit with our other emergency units, our suppression, our fire and EMS units to offer assistance and resources. A new focus that we implemented is our post overdose outreach. We started that around February. What that is, the team reviews 911 calls for suspected overdose that we identified through data pools from the day prior. We attempt to locate, contact and provide follow-up outreach to those patients. This falls in a period outside of the actual emergency when the scene can be chaotic, patients are critically ill, sometimes they, they require transport. So, outreach efforts aren't always possible. So far, we successfully outreach and encounter 30 of those patients, offered resources to them and a correction to the slide, successfully enrolled into a treatment program. Two of the patients have been successfully enrolled into our program where they allow us to outreach them on a daily basis, provide continuous resources to them so that when they are ready for treatment or, or otherwise, we can, we can assist them with that. So, with both of those practices, we provide point of care outreach either during, during an actual emergencies and post outreach afterwards, either a day later, sometimes two days later.
I, I'd love to hear it. That's, that's amazing.
So, I just want to piggyback behind Chief Cullen. So, what is this? This is a look at a snapshot of quarter three FY '24 over '25. I'm happy to report the lion's share of this, you're going to see reductions. The only places you're not seeing a reduction currently is District Eight, Six and One is at 0%, the other one slightly, but overall, we've had a significant negative numbers we've had down the road.
I'm going to hand off to the councilman from District Eight.
Yeah. Could you explain, could you go into those numbers, why? And then also, what coordinated response have you had with other, like, police, with health organizations, social program, social service programs to reverse that trend?
So, first of all, to take in perspective with the data, you went from 11 to 16, so it isn't like it's a huge, ginormous thing. We do look very closely, unfortunately, with the way our teams work when we do outreach for those kind of things. Our teams per Maryland State Protocol or the policies that follow us, we have to basically be drawn into those areas where they're having problems. And in those areas, that'll draw the team in. That was some of the things that Chief Cullen was just talking about. Our teams come in, sometimes our teams get there ahead of the ambulances and they may actually treat an overdose. What they do in addition to that, if it's post overdose, they'll try to build relationships with those patients. They try to offer them services and things to leave behind, we're going to talk about in a second. They do a lot more work than just treat overdoses and do leave behind Narcan. One, they build relationships. Two, they give them some legitimate resources so that when they're willing and, and able to go into treatment, we're able to be there for them and help them with that. We do work with several people. We'd also work with the Health Department. We work with on the spot through Hopkins. We're also building some additional things Dr. Lonner just talked about. B Corp with some of the next iteration where we'll be working with University of Maryland as well. Goldie is going to be the platform where if I get a call and paramedic Conway calls me and says he needs some treatment, Goldie is that system where we can call in that person, come in and do that treatment. So, we're making inroads overall. I think we've done a really good thing. You'll see some numbers in a couple of seconds where we're at all in all. Did that answer what you were looking for?
Not really. So, I wanted to know, well, do you know what's, what is leading factor into five more people, you know, overdosing off of opioids? It's only five people, like, it's from 11 to 16, but those are still five families that are, that could have had their loved one here. And when you look around, everyone else is decreasing and hopefully in quarter four. That shows the same thing in District Eight, but just wanted to know, like, is it a particular area? Was there at least a bad batch that was just prevailing in a certain area or like what were the circumstances around those, those five extra or that increase in general?
So, I'm, I'm going to start and then I'll let Chief Cullen go behind me. We're, we're basically drawing into there. It just has to do with what happened on that particular day and that particular batch. We don't know if that was, there could have been fentanyl mixed in with some of those. We also have a problem with the polypharmacy, we're going to talk about later where there's a bunch, a bunch of things going on. Understand, we do target neighborhoods. When we start to notice there's an increased incidence, we do have those teams drive through there. Over the last couple of years that they've been doing this, they've built relationships, they know where people hang out. What, hey, we're having an increase in Southwest Side, we need to take a look over the West Side and take a look. The teams will go over and head over in those areas and look and see what they can do. Chief Cullen, did I, did I answer that or you got more to add to that?
No, thanks, I'm not really understanding the question. We might be getting to that later when we talk about some of our efforts with, with some of the other agencies and, and our referrals and things. For that data screen, I'm, I'm not sure. That's not our overall citywide numbers either. They show the 20% decrease. I think we get to that last. That might, might.
Yeah, thank you for that. I just wanted to know if it was in Irvington or if it was in Allen. Like, you know, we could talk about this offline, if you could just update me with this, I would just like to know where. And because I want to work with whoever we can to make sure that we, that we are stopping that trend because I don't like to be in first place in something like this at all. But more importantly, I want to make sure that this doesn't continue. So, I mean, I guess that's, that's the baseline point of this. You know, if you could help my office figure out exactly where and we can be of assistance.
Absolutely. And that, that's no problem. We got to watch when we do a lot of this, we have to kind of de-identify because of the HIPAA piece of this, the health protected information. We could take it offline and we can talk.
I, I just wanted to also, I, I said it briefly, but applaud you guys for the proactive work that you're doing to seek out suspected overdoses and then try to provide support for, that, that's exactly what the population health team does. That's exactly why I think it's important because even if someone has lived from an overdose today and still is using, it's very likely that they're going to overdose again in the future. So, I think it's just smart. So, I just wanted to applaud you guys for, for being proactive. I think it's exactly the way we should be thinking about the issue.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And, and I think the importance of that is that on the scene, it is chaotic, they're not in the right frame of mind, there's bystanders around, they might not be ready to make that decision. So, bias hitting them later, it helps. If we, if we can go back two slides, just really quick, and I know enough at a time. So, the, the, the number to the right there, the non-patient contacts, I just want to point out for the team, we've made family bystander, community members, 14,601 contacts. And that's our, someone who may have witnessed, been directly or indirectly related to a suspected overdose. And those are people that we reached out to, provided an oxymoron, some training. You can go ahead, Chief Matt. And then this is an overview slide of our, our, our data, some of our population health awareness. That's our on-scene, on-scene, on the street, kind of mini community training, 1,972 events. I'll skip to the end, our long-term treatment center referrals. That number's actually 18 now. That, that number might not seem significant over two years, but that's 18 people that we actually got to commit to long-term. We actually got them directly admitted into a facility, not just a referral to, but there's our inpatient, inpatient centers. Any questions on that side? I'm trying to be quicker because I'm.
Can we get another population health team?
Yeah.
Just say yes. I'm kidding, go ahead.
Let's see. And then this slide is just an update on our buprenorphine program. Again, we, we're still at zero inductions. We're still seeing the same barriers of care or barriers to induction. The biggest is the poly substance use contraindication. A lot of people that we encounter aren't just on, on opiates, they're on other, other substance uses. An update to that, we have also collaborated with the Health Department, healthcare on the spot, Johns Hopkins Hospital, University of Maryland Addiction Medicine Clinic, BD Health to finalize referral process for patients in need of other MUDs like methadone and things like that. So, we have finalized that process. Every patient's different, their needs are different, their experience are different with, with these type of medications, so we can kind of cater each one of them to that. Next slide. And then lastly, this is our leave behind naloxone totals, these are the kits that come along with training, patients, family members, bystanders, members of the community that were directly or indirectly involved, 2,700, 596 doses. And to go back to the point, we, we identify these areas through active surveillance, through either active EMS calls or through those data pulls, is how we, we come up with the communities that we kind of flow around in.
And what timeline is this from? Is this from when we started the unit?
This is from the inception from, so from April of 20.
24.
I mean, July, yeah, I'm mixing that up with the.
July 23, that's okay.
With the chase car.
And the other thing I want to report is actually, these numbers are a little bit behind, they're a really, really active team. Those numbers are actually at 29,600 doses of leave behind Narcan as of last week. So what does that impact have? That's where the impact is right there. If you look at our numbers, year over year, we're down 25.2%. Last year, we found, it varied, 28, 29%. Now, does that mean that those overdoses aren't occurring? The answer is no. What that means is we're leaving a tool for people to self-treat, they're not calling us, right? They're treating each other. It's a lot easier to treat somebody that's withdrawn or has been treated versus somebody in cardiac arrest. Where do we go from here? We need to do that, like Chief Cullen just said, he got 18 people into treatment. That might sound like a little bit, that's a lot of work to get 18 people into treatment over the course of that. So, and that's my last slide. I'll open up the questions if you want from there, and thank you for your time.
I just want to add one very quick point, I mean, not that I could even build upon Chief Cullen, is that we all want this to happen rapidly, you know, overdose is not like, with all due respect, you know, putting out a fire, as an emergency physician, we love to treat people and fix them, we love to extinguish fire, but I think what you're seeing that these overdose people, even if they go to the hospital, if somebody is suspected or experiencing an overdose, it takes them hours and days to even get on methadone. So I think what you're seeing is us understanding the data, internalizing it, and shifting towards post overdose response in the hopes that patients will not only be more contemplative, but to your point, we have all the data being shared, and that's why we're trying to overlay Goldie and participate and share more transparently. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go to Councilman Blanchard first, and then I'll come to you, Councilwoman.
So probably not a clear answer to this one, but kind of the opposite of Councilman Gray's situation where his overdoses in his district had gone up slightly, they went down massively in my district. I think it was 44, a drop of 44, which was more than the, substantially more than the average number of overdoses in a district in all of FY24. This kind of feels like, like our BPD hearings, when it's like, the data is so positive that I get nervous that like, how will we continue this positive situation? But so I guess, not, not a committee request, maybe just a thought, is, is how do we know some of it is naloxone's being left behind, some of it is, hopefully, we're, you know, turning the corner on the, you know, the epidemic from, you know, drug market perspective or whatever, but, but it would be really interested to know, you know, maybe in, in next quarter's briefing, like, why, why does the Fire Department think that, you know, we're, we're having these, these really positive trends? And, and certainly, a lot of my, a lot of overdoses in my district tend to be concentrated in the likes of the market area and the Pennsylvania Avenue corridor. And so, you know, what, some specific sense of what might be driving that, if, you know, God willing, this positive trend is continuing for next quarter.
So I guess a long answer to that, I would, I would pass that over to our epidemiologists over, over the Baltimore City Health Department. I can talk to you on an operational basis of what the team sees, what our EMS units see. We, we see decreased, decreased activity in those areas that we frequent. Word of mouth a lot of times is when people say, hey, we just used that kid on that guy over there, he's walking away, so that call never gets to us, which, you know, decreases, decreases those 911 calls. It, it's not stopping the problem, that's something that we alone can't do, that's what our other agencies in the healthcare system can do, and until there's, there's sort of like a streamlined process where we can connect people to, we'll continue to get these calls, but, but if we're doing that and word of mouth is saying that and our data's showing that, you know, in the areas that we're frequencing, there is decreased activity, we, I'd strongly say that, that a lot of what we're doing is, is working. Is that fair?
So, so there's someone within epidemiology at the Health Department who would be the right people to be asking that question?
That's, that's their jobs, they're medical doctors who ask us, we, and we provide data to them, so we share our daily data with the Police Department and the Health Department, the identified data that they can track where a suspected overdose occurred, the address, the time of day, the age, the gender, and they compile that and they can explain that better.
Do some analysis of it, yeah. Well, thank you so much, and regardless of what the cause is, it's certainly really, really good news, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilwoman?
Thank you, sir. You mentioned Goldie, when does Goldie become live?
So I do not have a timeline on that currently, I can tell you it is live in Frederick County, and we just had a meeting with them looking at their experience. I would hope that since these projects are funded, I, I mean, I can estimate at about six months where you can at least operationalize it and put people into the system, so maybe that's something we can certainly circle back with and continue to report out. There are a series of meetings that are scheduled with the opioid task force, so hopefully I can have some updated metrics. They're still working out, as you might imagine, data sharing has been a little bit difficult, so we need to not only implement that and integrate it with our medical records, so hopefully I can have some more updates as this continues to roll out and part of the overall comprehensive plan.
Councilman Gray?
Yes. In light of just federal funding being slashed, obviously at the federal level, and the impacts that we will have when it comes to emergency management and just how, not just the Fire Department, Police Department, how we just move as a city, is there emergency evacuation or wellness check plan in place for everyone, but in particular, older adults during major emergencies, and how is the Fire Department coordinating with housing and social service agencies on this front? I figure you an answer.
So, so are you talking about like citywide for citywide emergency? So the lead agency for that's Emergency Management, as you know, I used to be over there. As, as a coordinating agency, it's, it's their responsibility to, to make sure that agencies are in fact prepared to be able to react during those times of emergency. You know, there's, there's continuity of operations plans and things like that are in place, but disaster planning is, is oftentimes front-loaded by way of just having the agencies themselves organized and, and set, ready to execute a plan based on the disaster type itself. So, you know, in this particular situation, evacuation of those kinds of facilities are extraordinarily challenging. If, if it's an event with notice, we, if we know we're having a hurricane come up the coast, the, the tool that, that Chief Stewart talked about earlier, the response and, or resiliency and planning tool that FEMA has out there, perfect tool to help anybody plan for an evacuation. A no-notice event becomes a bigger challenge. That, for no-notice events, oftentimes the best countermeasure is just a shelter in place. So I think that we as a department, as a Fire Department, I'll, I'll jump from OEM now to the Fire Department, I think as, we as a Fire Department are well-prepared to assist in that, but what also must be remembered is during those times of disasters, we're likely the lead agency attempting to mitigate or stand between those incidents and disasters in our populations. I, I hope that gave you a, a better understanding.
It, it did, thank you, because a lot of times you guys are the, the first line of defense, and so I do appreciate that answer, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just kind of, sort of recap some of the, what you guys have said, I, I think the, the end-all be-all here is to get folks into long-term, long-term treatment. I, I have to that effect, two questions. One, I know the population health team recently got the ability to begin administering or offering buprenorphine, do we know how often it's actually been offered after the administration of naloxone?
So, so for the team, they haven't encountered anyone who was a candidate? I could get the exact number of how many could have potentially had it, but probably fell into one of those barriers of induction that I said, e, either they, they refused it, there's a stigma behind it, they're on something else that contraindicates it, meaning like if they're on methadone or something else, or the poly substance abuse again is the biggest, so I would still say a handful of, of people that they've encountered who would be candidates for it.
Can you, would you mind sharing with the committee that breakdown, the number of folks eligible, and then of course the refusals, and I'm guessing what you're suggesting is that no one has received it yet?
No, no, on that slide, no, we have not, we have not administered one yet.
Okay. And I, I think one of the things that was apparent to me when I did the ride along was our, our population health unit, they are truly phenomenal, they do some of the best work that I've seen across the city, but they're not able to get there most times. So having an additional unit would certainly be helpful in the short term, we've got legislation to consider in the long term to spread that effort. I'm, I'm curious to that effect, given my earlier statement, I think the end-all be-all is you want to get folks into long-term treatment. Unfortunately, we haven't had anybody take that buprenorphine option, but I'm really curious about the step after that, and what we can do to streamline those efforts. I think Goldie, as you guys mentioned, sounds like it's something that might be able to help us make sure that people take steps after the initial offer of buprenorphine. But yeah, I think that, that's where things become interesting for me. You know, buprenorphine, I think, helps deal with the immediate withdrawal, but then after that, we want them to continue the therapeutic dosage, and tracking whether or not they actually do that is going to be something that's really helpful for the population health unit, hopefully multiple in the future, to know what's going on in the lives of the patients that they're working with. So I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at that number 16 right now, I, I would love that number to be, to have a zero behind it, or multiple zeros behind it. And I think making it as easy as possible for folks to take that next step is, I think, how we get there. I think logically, that's how I think, but I don't know until we start to offer and people start to accept that next step. So saying all that, just thinking out loud, I want you guys to think about that and what we can do to, to ease that next step for folks after an overdose.
And, and for, for that, we do put a second unit in service when staffing allows, it's not, it's not as often as we'd like to, 31 times, we do have two units out, and we try to split the city, we don't see a big significant increase because there's only so many calls going on during the day or when they're in service. And a lot of the overdose calls that do come out don't present as overdoses, and that's why the post overdose response is important, because we recognize it later, so whatever clinician might have documented points that out. And I don't want to discredit them too with the buprenorphine, they've had patients who were candidates and they probably could have gave it to, but they got them directly admitted, so a, a chunk of the, the direct admits into inpatient treatment actually were candidates, but because they were sent directly to there, they kind of, when, when they were discussing it with the clinicians at the facility, they, they said it was better to just wait until they got there, so.
So I think there, there's also two things I'm talking about here with buprenorphine, there is the therapeutic dosage, which is, this is what someone will begin to take regularly to manage their cravings for opioids, and then the sort of emergency dosage for dealing with withdrawal, which is why I asked a question specifically around naloxone and after the administration of naloxone. So I believe after the administration of naloxone, folks would be eligible, now, poly substance use situations might make it a little more complicated, but my understanding is that if someone has been given the naloxone, they would therefore be eligible because they are immediately within, within withdrawal. But the therapeutic dosage, I think, is much more difficult because someone has to be in withdrawal from not using for a number of days. So I, I think we may be talking about two different things, and I, I hope we're thinking about that difference in opportunities from the population health unit, the, the sort of emergency withdrawal response, and then the therapeutic dosage that we want folks to consider. And Dr. Lonner?
I would agree, so the, the literature on this is actually emerging, so our induction doses of buprenorphine are on par with the rest of the state, they're based upon very good metrics, so when somebody's in withdrawal, the dosages are 16 up to 24 milligrams. The challenge is, so, and, and I know we've talked about this before, I think the challenge is a little bit larger than buprenorphine, because it's not only the initial contemplative phase, but it's, it's the contraindications and it's patients that are willing to accept this. We have, again, our, our refusal rate is still about 40-something percent, and remember, of the ones that population health do not get to, all they're dealing with is withdrawal. So I would say a couple of things, because when we look at this space, and again, I'm an emergency medicine and EMS subject matter expert, so I rely on my addiction medicine colleagues, if you look at the programs in New Jersey, Hennepin, if you look at San Francisco and the others, basically it's a program where you have a harm reduction approach which gives buprenorphine at the induction dose to patients that are eligible. And eligibility is not just withdrawal, it's a very specific cow score, and it, and it's importantly in Maryland, it's a very specific team, and then there's the post overdose outreach, and then there's the sharing of information and the loop back and the, the kind of wraparound care. And the systems that succeed, the metric is not only how many people get more buprenorphine on scene, it's, as you mentioned, it's how many people that get connected and touched by teams like this. So we are working multifactorially, and I think a, a big target here, because our practice is not even governed by me. Like, unless I'm on scene, their practice is governed by state protocols, and we are working with the state to modify that and continue. I mean, low barrier is a word I hear all the time in harm reduction, and we're working to expand those criteria, because it is safe, and the thought is that many people will take it, but the reality is even in my emergency department practice, people don't want it because they want to use or they want to go back with methadone. So I've had even similarly difficult successes in the emergency department, but buprenorphine is certainly a tried and true tool in the toolbox, and we will work on optimizing that, especially as we revise protocols and the post overdose outreach.
That's good to know. Yeah, thank you. All right, any further questions from the committee? I thank you guys for always being over-prepared and continuing to deliver on all fronts. We will send out a follow-up with the things that we've discussed here today, I just really, really, really appreciate you guys, thank you. Thank you. This hearing is in recess.